Thank you for coming, it's a nice crowd. We'd like to open with a special presentation.
Yeah, so we're welcome, we'd like to welcome Representative Susan Gifford, who is here to present a citation from Governor Baker recognizing the construction of the Carver Elementary School. Representative Gifford, nice to see you this evening.
Thank you, thank you for having me today.
Welcome.
It's my pleasure to present to you this important citation in recognition of the grand opening of the school. So if I may read it, "The Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Carver Elementary School Grand Opening. On behalf of the citizens of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, I am pleased to confer upon your organization this governor's citation in recognition of your grand opening and your steadfast commitment to serve and educate the children of Carver, Massachusetts. Given this 20th day of September in the year 2018, Charles D. Baker, Governor, and Karen E. Palito, Lieutenant Governor, I would like to present this to you."
Congratulations, great job.
Ms. Gifford, you got to be there at the opening and walk through, what'd you think?
It was amazing.
Beautiful place, right?
Absolutely, I mean, words can't describe it. I mean, until you actually see it, it's just phenomenal. So, again, great job, what a great achievement for the town.
Excellent, thank you, thank you for coming, too, appreciate it.
Thank you, thanks for having me. Have a great evening, everybody.
Moving on, comments from the general public. Mr. Dunham?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Alan Dunham, 11 Ricard Street. I just want to take this opportunity, over social media, about a week, week and a half ago, there was quite the, a lot of statements going around concerning the new sports complex and the funding for it and the fact that there was no concession stand. And somehow, the rumor got out there that the town took the extra money that was left over that could have been used for the concession stand and bought two dump trucks with it. And I just wanted to clear that up, that we did not buy two dump trucks using any money from the sports complex. Any money left over from the sports complex went for equipment to be used to maintain the sports complex, as well as one pickup for the school, because yours had pretty much died and we could never be resurrected again. So I just wanted to clear that up, that, you know, the town did not take any money from the sports complex, and I'm just sorry I wasn't able to be there Friday, but I had a wedding to attend to in Vermont, but I heard it was a great success. But thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Seeing no one else coming to the mic, huh? Sure, Jim?
Good evening, Jim Hoffman, A Great Meadow Drive. First of all, I want to thank Andrew for the meeting with the little small task force for the user fees for the field. For those that aren't aware, Andrew took it upon himself to invite several of the youth groups to a meeting, as well as superintendent, school committee members, and, just like I said, the various youth groups, just to talk, have a good roundtable discussion of everyone's concerns for that. One of the things I just wanted to bring out, another question for before the user fees are set, was, we've got a few projects coming up in town, solar projects in particular, that I know in the past pilot programs have been made with these projects. And I just want to know if anyone's approached the selectman or town administrator about maybe getting some funds to help offset some of these user fees for that. So just trying to see different avenues to try to keep the cost down for all the youth groups. And I know in the past, they've, some of the pilot money has gone towards some school programs, so hopefully, some of that maybe can go towards the town use and the school use fields, again, just to keep the fees down.
Thanks, sir. Any other comments? Seeing none, move to comments from the EAPC.
Good evening. We just want to let you know that, as you see, look around, we're all here tonight to show that we're united and that we're looking to receive the fair contracts that we believe we deserve. I'm now going to turn the mic over to Tammy.
Thank you, good evening. We, the EAPC, are here this evening to ask the school committee to fully support teachers and educators of the Carver School District with a fair contract. The educators of Carver have weathered some heavy financial storms for the past decade. These storms have made our working conditions more and more challenging every year. At the last town meeting, I heard some conflicting messages. One member of the town finance committee asserted that Carver is in the best financial position it has ever been, yet our school district had just suffered from a huge workforce loss, 23 positions, to be exact. This year, the school budget was presented without any reinstatements from this loss. Our elementary school began with a shortage of paraprofessionals, especially in kindergarten, a shortage of art and music, and one less fifth grade teacher. Our middle high school continues to do without our technology teacher. We are down a math, English, science, and social studies teacher. The music offerings are half of what they used to be. Our school district spending has not been increased, and it's not even close to the state average, yet our town officials have publicly spoken about the excessive spending in education, specifically teacher salaries, when in reality, our salary schedule is below the state average and losing ground each year. Time and again, school district employees have an endured loss of staff, increasing out-of-pocket healthcare expenses, with minimal cost of living increases. Each year, it becomes more expensive to live and we watch our income diminish. More and more young educators cannot afford to work in Carver because the salary is too low and the cost of living is too high. This directly affects how our children are educated. I'm pleading with each and every member of the school committee to hear me. You were elected to represent the children who have no voice and cannot vote. Please hear us. We need your support, not just in words, but in actions. The single most important factor in the education of the children of Carver is the teachers. We need to be treated with dignity and respect. We deserve a fair contract. Thank you.
We'll be right with you, Erica.
So, we're down a little bit by illness today. So, we're missing Jenna Sweeney. Jasvier McIntosh, we were going to do a recognition of later in the evening, is also, was out sick today. Stephanie Clarity is out sick today. So, we're a little short from illness, but in terms of...
But you are here, and you've got some information for us, right? Excellent.
Yeah, if you guys could just introduce yourselves to the committee and give us the student council update, that'd be great.
Yeah, so I'm president, I'm Claire Manning, I'm a senior at the high school.
I'm vice president, I'm Josh Kennedy, and I'm also a senior. So last week, our student council attended Fall CMAS, which is a leadership opportunity for kids in high school. On Tuesday, we went to Silver Lake Regional High School, and we brought students 9th through 12th grade where they can foster their leadership skills and hone in on them. Also, our executive board attended Officer Shop, which is the same thing, but specifically for officers in student council, and that was at College of the Holy Cross. It, um, excuse me, it went off this year's theme of Dramatic Park and leaving your mark as a leader and a student in your schools, and five of our seniors attended that.
So then, a little bit about like upcoming for this month. So, October 19th, which is actually this Friday, we're hosting a tailgate outside of like the new sports complex, and we're asking just like students if they come dressed as like the homecoming theme that we had, continued just for more fun. And it's going to be like $10, but that includes admissions to the game and food and a bunch of other stuff. And then, we're going to have like an opportunity drawing for like some free Thanksgiving admission tickets, so make that a little more fun and like lasting. October 24th, we are having an apple pie social for the communities in Carver for the 55-plus. So we actually are reaching out to two communities, the Cranberry Village and South Meadow Village, so we're hoping for a bigger turnout this year. We only asked South Meadow previous years, and all that money raised goes to Special Olympics. And then, October 31st, we are having students, if they want, to dress up in costumes during school, and they donate a dollar or more to Make-A-Wish, and that's where that money will be going. And thank you.
Thank you, guys. Alan, there's a couple of the smaller parks in town as well, isn't there? They're like Pine Tree and...
Oh, yeah, Pine, the mobile home parks are Pine Tree, that's an all-age community. You've got Water View Village, which is senior, South Meadow Village, and Cranberry Village.
So if you're looking for more turnout, there's still two more to go.
Yeah, I didn't know about Waterville, but that's good to know.
The apple pie social is always a popular event.
Oh, yeah, they love it.
And then this Friday is a new event, so we'll see.
Yeah, this is very new, yeah.
What time does that start on Friday?
I think we said 5:30, and then it's going to go to like game time, so.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your time, thanks for coming out today. Nice job. And thank you, Claire, it says Erica right here on my board, so apologize for that. Moving on, approval of minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular session minutes for September 17th, along with the executive session minutes at 6:30 and on the 9:30.
Second.
Motion made in second, any changes, comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Communications.
So, we had one of our teachers, Jasvier McIntosh, who we invited here this evening, but as I said, she was out today. She's been selected to be what's called a Teach+Commonwealth Policy Fellowship, or Fellow. So I'm going to give you a little background on what that is, and then Jasvier did a little write-up to talk about her experience so far. So Teach+ is a national nonprofit organization dedicated to the mission of empowering excellent, experienced teachers to take leadership over key policy and practice issues that affect their students' success. Teach+ Commonwealth Policy Fellows come together monthly for policy and advocacy training on such skills as storytelling for impact, op-ed writing, meeting with decision-makers, and more. So so far, Jasvier has said that this is a selective opportunity, so she had to apply for this, and only 24 teachers were selected across the state, and there were many, many applicants, so getting this fellowship is a distinguished honor. So Jasvier said, so far, her role has been, they've met with the commissioner, Jeff Riley, so they've only had one meeting, and so they met with the commissioner, and that they've begun to learn about writing effective op-eds and how to research to support positions. And basically, their goal is to try to influence policy in Massachusetts in terms of education. And their focus over in the past has been, they kind of give a list of things they've worked on, is recruitment and retention of teachers, implementation of ESSA, school turnaround, social-emotional learning, and funding for education across the state. Obviously, funding becomes a key policy issue for us, so we're going to have a teacher on the ground floor who's going to be advocating policy positions in terms of increasing funding for all schools within the state of Massachusetts, and really looking at, you know, implementing the Foundation Budget Review Commission. So this is in a selective group that Jasvier's been asked to be a part of, and she's excited for the opportunity, and we're excited to have one of our teachers involved in this fellowship. So we were going to recognize Jasvier today and give her the opportunity to speak about it a little bit, but as I said, she was out today and unable to attend the meeting. So I wanted to just make the committee aware that we had a teacher doing that, and we can probably invite Jasvier back, you know, maybe more towards the middle end of the year to kind of give more of an update, because so far, the fellowships only had one meeting and they met with the commissioner, and kind of gave an overview of this is our work that we're going to do. So I think she'll have a lot more to tell us as we move into the winter and the spring. So I'll invite Jasvier back for a later meeting to give us kind of an update on the policy issues that they've been pursuing.
Thank you. Reports from the superintendent.
So, just want to recognize some new staff members, and so we have a new middle high school science teacher, her name is Molly Travers, and Mrs. Hawley's going to come up and do a little introduction of Molly. So why don't the two of you come up together? That'd be great.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening to the families at home. It is truly my honor to introduce to you tonight Molly Travers. She's joining our middle school team of the 6th grade team in the Science Department. She comes to us from the University of Mass Amherst with a degree in environmental science, and she's passionate about continuing to study. She's seeking to get her master's in education, and she calls herself a lifelong learner. Since she's been there, I've had the opportunity to visit her class on several occasions, and the students have been fully engaged. They lost their teacher during this academic year, and she's been able to support the students and help them with that transition quite smoothly, so I'm really excited to continue to work with her. And outside of helping our students succeed, she enjoys running and reading, anything that is outdoors, and she's looking forward to the warmer months to bring the students outside, so they too can have a passion for the outdoors as well. So, I introduce to you Molly Travers.
Thank you very much, it's nice to meet you all.
My hour goal is just to welcome you to the district. Don't feel like you necessarily have to make a speech, but you're welcome to hear any thoughts to chat.
All right, well, thank you very much. I've only been here for a few weeks, but so far, it's been wonderful, and like you said, I've been just trying to make it a smooth transition, so, so far, so good, and like I said, it's nice to meet you all, thanks.
Thank you, Molly, congratulations.
Molly, can I ask you one quick question?
Sure.
First of all, obviously, it's great to have you here. I was just kind of curious, what really about Carver stood out in the job search that made you feel that this would be a good fit for you?
So actually, last year, I worked in Plymouth as an AmeriCorps member, which is a very different town, but nearby, and then also, I grew up in Sandwich, which I think is a very similar community to Carver in a lot of ways, so I think that the smaller size of the schools was interesting to me, and then as well as the middle high school combination was also different than other districts I'd seen.
Great, well, thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Welcome.
Thanks.
So we did have a couple of the staff movements since our last meeting. We hired a new food service worker, Nicole Croll, and a new middle high school special education paraprofessora, Amanda Rabello. And we also had one resignation since our last meeting, and that was Janine Marra, a food service employee who resigned this past week. So that's kind of our update on employment since our last time we met. Moving on.
Enrollment.
Enrollment report, so our October 1 numbers. So linked above for all, everybody to see, and I think Merritt's pulling it up right now, maybe, has it up? Can you make it a little bit bigger? Down the bottom?
Yes.
Yeah. So, and we're going to look at this report in a lot more detail in November, this is just kind of giving you the October 1 number. So our official, Merritt, if you can scroll down a little bit, our official October 1 number for the district was 1,575 students. That's 21 students less than last year at this time, which was 1,596. And what will happen next month, I'll give a much more detailed report, where we'll kind of tie out where the, where kids are and where may they have left. So we'll look at the sending report, and we'll find out what Carver kids, what kids live in Carver but don't attend the Carver Public Schools. It gets reported out to us every other school that they may attend, and we'll go through school by school and give you a detailed list of where students who live in Carver may be attending school and not the Carver Public Schools. And what we're going to see in that report, and we haven't finalized yet, that's why we didn't present it tonight, because it's not done, it's a, it's a pretty detailed procedure to get contact from all those schools, have them report out, tie back the report to make sure it's all accurate. Takes us a little bit of time to do that after October 1st, takes us a few weeks, so we'll have that report in November. But looking at it so far, we're going to see some trends, that we don't have a lot of huge shifts in kids leaving the district. So I think a lot of this movement, this loss of 21 students, is really going to just be attributed to attrition, just students moving out of the district versus maybe students making choices to go to other schools. As an example, our charter school number actually is going to be down a little bit from last year, which is the first time our charter school number's been down in the last couple of years. So we'll look at this in much more detail coming up in November, but since this is the official October 1 number, we put that out there to the committee tonight, and we'll tie back this report in our November presentation, and we'll kind of look at where kids are and where they're going and why they're making the choices they are. The other thing I'm going to present in November along with this, is we have been, since last year at this time, when we, we started to really look at seeing, we started for the first time, asked questions, why are students leaving the district? So since, since this time last year, every student who's left the district, we've tried to survey them. Now honestly, not every student has completed the survey, we can't, we can't make them do the survey, but a lot of students have, so we're going to have that survey data for you next month as well, to kind of say, this is what students have reported when they've left the district, is why they've made the choice to go to another district. And that includes moving, you know, so we'll see that piece of, we moved out of Carver, but then we'll see, we'll also see people saying, I made a choice to go to this charter school, and this is the reason why, I made the choice to go to Old Colony, this was the reason why. So we'll look at some of that data next month as well, as in terms of choices students are making and why they may be choosing to enroll at a school different than the Carver Public Schools. So more detailed data to come in November. No action necessary to be taken on this, just wanted to give people the number.
So we're up to Janelle.
Yep.
Ms. Hawley.
The next two presentations are all about score reporting, so Ms. Hawley's going to make a presentation about our AP and SAT scores, and then Merritt will make a presentation about our MCAT scores.
So please welcome Ms. Hawley. How are you?
Great. I feel like saying, long time no see, Janelle.
All right.
So what you have before you is our SAT and AP scores for this academic year, and what I've done, if we transition to the next page, is with our SAT scores, I've included how we compare, not just to, within our school community, but how we compare to the state, as well as how we compare to globally, to all of the students who are taking SATs within the United States. So where it says ERW, just to be clear, that's the evidence-based reading and writing component. Most people will find that the component that deals with more so the ELA component, and we can see that, within our data, our students are scoring, as far as meeting the benchmark, at 93%. I'm not going to do the .6 unless you would like me to for each of them, but I'll just stick with the larger numbers. In comparison to the state, that's at 82, as well as, again, comparatively better than the global, where we're seeing 79. When we begin to look at math, I just want to be clear about math as well, within the SAT, the benchmark rating is different, so you will notice within ERW, the score range that they utilize is 480 for the ERW component. However, it is a higher caliber that they are measured for mathematics, where it's 530. So when we see the math, I just wanted to make sure that we're also recognizing that it's not a similar comparison between the two sets of data.
So, just to, as a point of clarity, so this, in essence, reports that, on the reading, that 93% of Carver students scored above 480.
Correct.
Because that was the benchmark data.
Absolutely.
And then, 66% of our students scored above 530 in math, which was the benchmark data, and then we have that comparison to both the state and the national comparison.
And I want, and thank you for clarifying that, and also, just to be clear about looking at the overall SAT scores, we're looking at the 1,600, where there's the two components where students can score between 200 to 800, but the data that we're looking at is really about that benchmark in reference to how our students are scoring, okay? And then, for the met both, you will see, so oftentimes, the question is garnered regarding, we see that our students met at a 66 percentile for math, however, there's only a 65 for met both, and that's because this data is taken into account the entire year, so there's multiple assessments that are garnered throughout the year, so that's why the percentage is off by one, so I just wanted to also bring that to clarity. Again, I'm happy to report that, as a community, we are outperforming not just the state, but globally as well.
And I think it's important to point out that Massachusetts has the highest SAT scores in the country. So it's, you know, scoring above the state average in Massachusetts is a high, is a good benchmark for us, and I think it's a good thing. We want to see our students scoring above the state average, but it's important to point out that we're scoring above the state average of the state that has the highest scores in the country.
I saw a guy at the store the other day who said, we're overeducated around here.
That's a great thing.
I don't know what that means.
And I, well, I didn't include this data, I just wanted to make sure you guys also had it, just in case you funnel any questions from this presentation. I encourage parents to reach out to the school if they seek for additional clarification, but I'm happy to report last year that we did have students, 4% of our population overall, all of our students scored within that 1,400 to 1,600 range, which is the highest range that any student can score within SAT, so our students are definitely reaching the highest standards, and I just wanted to acknowledge that component as well.
So that would be 4% when the graduating class was like 120, is that what?
It's closer to 100, so it's probably four students.
I'm sorry, Janelle, is that usually a year-to-year thing, or is that, being honest, is that something that doesn't usually happen, or?
So we've started to get new reports, so this is the first time we've gotten these reports where they've actually broken it down that way for us. We've traditionally gotten reports that show us the five-year trend, but we were able to pull that out, and then it showed us just, again, 99% of our students scored 800 or above, and that's again, starting from the benchmark of 400. So our students are doing substantially well, and within the 800 to 990 range, it was 17%. The remainder were, of that 99%, were in the above range. So now I will switch gears to advanced placement. There's a lot more slides and presentations for advanced placement, but it doesn't mean that SATs are not valued the same as AP, so I just wanted to make that clear to the community as well. So in this first slide, we will see it's a comparison between our participation and results for advanced placement between 2017 and 2018. This year, last year, is what I'm referencing, we had 102 students take 199 exams. Many of our students take two or more AP exams, and of those, 117 of those students, 117 of the scores from the 199 AP exams received a score of three or higher. The score of three is a score that is traditionally recognized by colleges where they will provide the students with college credits, and that gives us a grand total of 85% of our students scoring at that three or higher. The year previous, we had 105 students take more AP exams, 217 to be exact, where 132 of those exams scored three or higher, and we saw a 61% student scoring higher. So while we had a few fewer students taking less exams, we did see that the percentage of students who've been successful on scoring three or higher did increase between those two years. Any questions? So if we move on to the next slides, what I've done is I've broken down for the last five years how our students have done. In some categories, unfortunately, due to the way that the data was inputted, whenever I put in non-applicable, it did not allow it to show up as non-applicable, but there were some years that we had a score. So if we look at art history, art history is an interesting course because we don't currently offer it at the traditional setting of our school, but we do provide students with opportunities through online courses to take AP courses, because we want to definitely expand their opportunities that are available to them. So within the first four years, you'll see 2014 through 2017, there's no data for our school, and that's because students weren't involved in that course, so I didn't want you to think the students were not succeeding. And last year, we had a student take it, and that student was able to score within the 3 percentile range or higher, okay? So again, is your preference for me to read you the data or just to highlight? So again, is your preference for me to read you the data, or just to highlight big picture? What's your preference?
Like, we have it in front of us.
Okay. Moving into biology, we can see that this year, we did experience a decrease, and we've actually, for the past several years, for the past three years to be exact, we have had a shift in educators, and we know that that has caused some impact to the scores. We're really excited about the educator who is currently teaching the course, as well as the level of rate that students are coming in, being prepared to move on. And we've definitely delved into the data to determine where the students are the weakest, to make sure that we're exposing them to those particular standards as they progress through this academic year. And we can see that we are just under range from how we've done years previously, but that is something that we have been truly working on and figuring out, how do we begin to expose students to more success within that particular content? Moving into calculus. Calculus is one that we are exceptionally excited to see how our students are doing, recognizing a lot of the industries that students will have opportunities to work in, and to see them really having strength in the math and science components as well. And you can see that our students are, over the last few years, they're outperforming both Massachusetts and throughout the nation by more than double digits in reference to how they're scoring in comparison. English language composition, again, we're seeing that, within the last academic year, you can see the growth that our students have been experiencing, and that growth has begun in 2016, where, again, you can see we had growth between 2014 and 2015. There were some slight adjustments, but you will notice that with most things and most data points, you'll see that there are some ebbs and flows that transpire as the student population does change as well. Question? For the English literature composition part, again, you can see that, within the last two years, our students have been outperforming both the nation as well as in Massachusetts. We're looking at students who went from... Do you have a question?
Oh, no.
Okay.
I just wanted some clarity.
No problem. We see that students experienced growth of over double digits. Again, the teachers, annually, they receive this data in the summer so that they have the opportunity to reflect on their curriculum, determine what adjustments they want to make to their practice moving into the next academic year. And you can see that those decisions and that digging is really helping to prepare the students for each academic year as we move forward. As we move into environmental science, I just want to capture that in 2014, that class was not offered, but it is a class that we are continuing to, to keep our pulse on. We can see that we experienced quite a bit of growth between the 2015 and 2016 year, and we've noticed that the trend has gone down between 17 and 18. So we've really started to look at the students who were in the courses, we started to look at what were some of the components that led to the decrease to ensure that, coming into this academic year, we can better prepare our students for success as they move forward.
Was there anything in particular you found on that?
Um, so we found that several of the students who were in environmental science also weren't taking other AP courses and had full loads. So as we try to, it's always a fine balance with the size of our population between encouraging students to take additional opportunities, encouraging students to be athletes, encouraging students to take on this full spectrum, and be able to manage all of these responsibilities. So a lot of the students who were there also had other courses. So we're trying to figure out, how do we, again, create those opportunities, but provide some opportunities to help them with the balance?
Big picture, it seems like most of the fluctuations are in, in science in one way or another, though.
Yes.
Is there any connection through all of that, or?
The standards have changed within science nationally, so we recognize that a lot of the preparation that they've received have been different from where College Board has garnered and set the standard. So even within that, today I met with the Department Chair of Science, who actually teaches one of the courses, and we were really talking about how do we utilize the time that we have professionally this year to begin to tie that connection between the standards and making sure the kids have the prerequisites that'll be needed to be successful as they move into the AP courses.
Scott, have you heard that sciences were a possible reason that people are enrolling in other schools?
No, there has been a direct correlation of concern about science offerings, or, to my knowledge, I don't think anybody pointed that as a specific item.
And we've also engaged in the conversation, as well as, as about increasing our AP course offerings, where we're considering some courses within the sciences. The sciences are specialties that, if a student is interested in biology, if a student is interested in chemistry, that they look vastly different than some of the other components within the advanced placement course offerings. So if we move to the European, again, we see the ebbs and flows where our students are, while we did see an increase between 17 and 18, and we moved from a point where we were behind both the state and global last year, that we've gone ahead, and not only have we met, but we have exceeded where they have placed as well. Human geography, I included it because we did have that course offered, as far as students having the opportunity to take it within the last five years, so I wanted to include that data, but it is not a course that we traditionally offer. And it's something that during the year, we offered it, that student did not score at a level three. But I wanted to just be transparent with all of the data that we had.
And that was offered probably through the online, so it wasn't, it wasn't taught in the building.
Correct. Yeah, we only had one student. As we move into macro and micro, again, I just wanted to bring clear that in the 2014 and 2015 year, students did not take it. These courses, again, are also offered online. So we had students take it in the 2016 year. We had one student who was enrolled in both. That student actually was not successful in scoring at a level three. However, in 2017, we had the, a student who took five AP courses their senior year, and that student was able to score successfully on all five of the exams, and that's noted within 2017. And last year, we had, again, one student who took that online. We do recognize with the online, and this is something we've been discussing, the level of support isn't necessarily the same as having a classroom teacher day-to-day, but we do try to provide those opportunities to students when we can't offer the course in a traditional way. So we've definitely had some conversations as a leadership team with the department chairs about how do we provide additional supports within the building to help those students who are on the online platform take an advanced placement courses. Next, we move into physics and to psychology. Physics was not offered in 2014, so I did not capture that data, but you can see that it's been offered over the last four years. And again, we're starting to see a steady increase in growth. We haven't met the marks as far as the benchmarks that are in comparison to the state and global, but we are happy to see that we are maintaining and moving towards an upward trend. As we move into psychology, psychology, we've been pretty close with ebb and flowing with how the state, as well as the global market, has been doing. However, this year, we were taken aback when we looked at the global platform to see how students were scoring at an 86 percentage, noting that there's been a double-digit increase globally, but we weren't seeing the same thing. So we really wanted to delve down into what was a different experience. But we can see that we're very comparable to our state as we looked at that data chain.
And I was going to comment on psychology a little bit, because I think it's an interesting trend in terms of what's happening with AP, and so what our goal is as well, is there's been a tremendous push for students to take AP courses. And the College Board recommends that any student going off to a four-year college should take at least one AP course at high school in their high school experience. And, and I think, because the concept of the AP course is supposed to be the equivalent of a college-level curriculum. And many students do report back that their experience when they go to college is that if they have to repeat that AP course, that it is very similar to the course they took at high school. This is anecdotal, but I'll use my own child as an anecdotal reference. Two, she took AP Biology and AP Chemistry in high school. She's in a science degree program where they didn't accept her scores, because that's also been a trend recently, is that colleges are less likely to accept your AP scores because more kids are taking them. And from my perspective, that costs them money. That's a little bit of a political statement, but they don't want to give you AP credit if you're going to not have to pay them to take those courses. My daughter is in a science course, a science program, and they said, we don't accept your AP courses, you need to take our science classes. But when she took AP Biology and AP Chem in her freshman year of college, it literally, she said it was the same course she had taken in high school as AP Bio and AP Chem. They didn't call it, you know, they called the chemistry one, biology one, but it was the same course. And that's the goal of the AP curriculum, is that you're supposed to be taking a college-level course. So the recommendation is, if you're taking a four-year, if you're planning to go to a four-year college, you should take an AP course at high school. And we encourage that, we push our students to take AP courses, and we're trying to get as many kids to take AP courses as they can. I'm getting to a point here. Somewhere along the line, there's a point that's going to come out of this, is that psychology has been one that's considered an accessible AP course. And there's been a, a large push throughout the state of Massachusetts to have students take psychology. The other one that's been a huge push, which may not see reflected in the scores, is AP Language, is considered an accessible AP course. And so the College Board recommends, if you're going to take one or two AP courses, you should take AP Language, you should take Psychology. And so there's been a tremendous push within the state to have students take AP Psychology. I don't, I don't, and so my sense, when you look at this data, because if you look at the data overall, in most places, sort of like the SAT scores, Massachusetts outperforms the global average. And our goal is, we want to be on par with the Massachusetts average in outperforming the global average. But this one's an interesting one, where the global average is actually much higher. And I think that, I think that's because there's actually been a huge push in Massachusetts to take AP Psychology, and there's a lot of kids taking it. And that's a, that's a good thing, but when you have a lot of kids taking this AP course, maybe a few of them are able to reach that bar. Now, you could make that argument, that's still positive for them because they took this course, had this experience, helping prepare them for college, which you want to do, but that's, changes sometimes your, your scores. And, and we've been making that push, we've been looking to increase our AP enrollment. So if you look over the last five years, Janelle just gave you the last two, you know, compared, the number of kids, the number of AP courses that were taken five or six years ago is fewer than the number that's taken now. So our kids are taking more AP courses, and we're offering more AP courses, and we have more kids involved in them. Sometimes that might result in a little bit of a diminishment of your scores, possibly. And I actually think psychology is an example of that in Massachusetts. So that's my, that's my editorial comment of the day. There might be another one later.
So far.
So we're moving to statistics. And again, if you look at the statistical data, you can see that our students are performing slightly under both the state and global area. The last time that we were performing higher than both the global, as well as the state, has been in 2015. Scott, I don't know if you wanted to speak to that?
Nope.
Okay.
No editorial comments.
But it is, again, as we look to provide this opportunity to more and more students, just to, to continue off of that venue, is we're really making sure that all students feel that they're welcome to the course, so it's not, that this is not replacing an honors-level course and only these particular students can go. We're really pushing for all students to have the opportunity prior to, to moving into the collegiate atmosphere. For United History, again, we are currently, and you can see over the past five years, the trend has been that we're either meeting or exceeding the global standards, as well as we are currently on par or slightly behind the state standard within the United History, the United States History course. And then last, but definitely not least, World History. That is a course that, again, hasn't been offered for the past four years, so when you see no data, I don't want you to interpret that to mean that our students weren't successful there. Last year, we had a student who took on the opportunity, we actually had two students who took on the opportunity through the online platform, and both of those students were able to score at a level three or higher. So I know that that data was breaking down quite a bit in comparison to the SAT, but I thought it was important to, just to go through all of the courses that we provide to our students, both through our traditional setting as well as our online platform.
Thank you. Any questions?
No, I think we talked during it, too.
Thank you, Janelle.
No problem.
And I think next, we're going to transition into MCAS scores.
I was so excited when I got here and there was standing room only, I thought, everyone's come to see MCAS scores. So I'm, I will share this at other times, at staff meetings. So I wanted, thank you for laughing. I wanted to give you my annual presentation on MCAS and share some highlights about changes that have happened at the state, and to provide a little bit of a refresher about the way that the test itself is shifting. So over the course of my presentation, I'm going to highlight the changes that took place to the MCAS test last year, and some of the upcoming changes that ultimately inform our accountability system, and then to review the building and district results, to provide the comparison data as appropriate, and then to kind of lay the foundation for Scott's presentation in November around the changes in the accountability system under the new ESSA law that replaces the Elementary and Secondary Education Act. So with that said, just as a reminder from last year, we're in a state of flux right now at the state level when it comes to the MCAS assessment. So in the past, students have taken something called the Legacy MCAS. That is the MCAS that was born out of the Massachusetts Ed Reform Act back in 1993. And after 20 years of that particular legislature driving MCAS as a graduation requirement, they decided that they were going to make a shift, and the shift has come in different phases. So there are two different types of data that I'll be reporting out on tonight. I did this last year, but just to remind folks that there's Next Generation MCAS, which really covers English Language Arts and Math in grades three through eight, and then the Legacy MCAS, or the former MCAS, which we'll see represented tonight in English Language Arts and Math for 10th grade, so that's that high school graduation requirement, and then in science, grades 5, 8 in high school. And just a reminder about the differences, so with Next Generation MCAS, they are looking to assess content and skills outlined in the updated Massachusetts Frameworks that were updated in 2011 and again in 2017 for English Language Arts and Math. And then to respond to what we know as kind of current best practice when it comes to these types of standardized tests. So as opposed to a traditional multiple-choice question, you see a variety of questions that are supposed to require a fair amount of cognitive capital, including multiple responses. So that's when it looks like a multiple-choice question, but you can have more than one answer, and you can click more than one answer as a correct option. And then multiple-step questions, so you'll see that indicated as like a Part A and a Part B. I think I had given an example last year where, in order to perform Part B correctly, you had to make sure that you completed Part A correctly as well. And then constructed response and short answer that requires the test taker to go into depth and be able to demonstrate both knowledge and skill. And then before we get into it, the other thing that I wanted to share is, if you are a parent of children that have taken this assessment, either here or the viewing audience at home, you should have received from your child's school a copy of the state parent report, which they improve and make, make more clear every single year. But in that particular report, and this is just an example from the state, this is not actual student data, it will list your child's name, so here it says John Doe, and then the grade, and it shows the range for the new Next Generation MCAS assessment. So it shows that 500, for every single year, 500 is the, the score, the line of demarcation between not meeting grade-level expectations and meeting grade-level expectations. And then as you climb into the 500s and get to 530, you'll see meeting, excuse me, you'll see exceeding expectations, and then prior to 500, you'll have either partially meeting or not meeting. So as parents, you can look at that, it gives a descriptor about each of those, along with some ideas of what you can do. It also provides, towards the bottom of this screen, an opportunity to see how your child did compared to peers within the school, and then within the state as well. did compared to peers within the school, and then within the state as well, if you're looking for that kind of comparison data. And it also provides more specific information about each of the tests and breaks it down by domain. So, the example here is math, and it shows that John Doe, again, in this case, earned seven out of 10 points in one of the domains in operations and algebraic thinking, as opposed to the average six out of 10. And at the very bottom, it gives you the list of different questions and how many points your child earned. There is a link on that report, if you want to look at it, that allows you to go in and see what all these questions look like, but be prepared, only half of them are released every year, and that way they can replenish their test item bank. But it is a fun Friday night date activity for you and your spouse to sit down and review that material. So with that said, I'm gonna move on to where Carver performed in terms of MCAS with the one caveat that I like to stick in almost every presentation, and that is just a reminder about the continuous improvement cycle, where we take things like MCAS data, and we use that to analyze and figure out where our instructional priorities are. And then from there, we meet and figure out what kind of professional development or coaching is needed, if it's particular classrooms, grade levels, programs, that sort of thing. And then we hopefully see that training manifested in the classroom, the assessment occurs again, and then we get a new set of data to continue to review. And just a reminder that it takes several years to establish trend data, so you look at averages over three, four, or five years, so that you can look at the efficacy of different initiatives and programs. Ultimately, the idea is that we increase student achievement, and that over those trends, that we're able to see improvement. So in terms of a data review, I'm gonna look at our school achievement compared to the state average, and then the growth, and I'll explain again the difference between those, and then a gap narrowing analysis where we're looking at how subgroups perform, and then we'll get to how we compare to other local school districts. So, in terms of achievement and growth, this is kind of a big slide, an important slide. It shows us for English Language Arts, grades three through eight, again, this is the Next Generation assessment, so these tests are harder, they are meant to measure more rigor and more complexity, more depth of knowledge. It shows that in the first column, how our district did compared to the state, anything where we outperformed the state, I highlighted the box. It also shows what the average scaled score is, again, 500 would be meeting expectations, and then shows our growth. And the idea is if we are making average growth, we are at a 50. And then the last column says achievement percentile, and that is a new report that they have out, and school achievement percentiles compare each group's average scaled score to the average scaled score of the same group from all public schools around the state. So only students that were enrolled in October 1st, so getting back to the enrollment data that we just looked at, are included in the calculations, and you have to have at least 10 students in your school. So we're fine in that regard, being a large elementary. And you can see here of note that in fifth grade, we were on average with the state, so 54% of our students were meeting or exceeding expectations, our average scaled score was above 500. And then, not only that, but our growth was higher than the 50, which was great. The other thing I want to point out is in seventh grade, even though we were above the state, it shows that our average scaled score was not at 500, but if you dig a little bit deeper and you look at the achievement percentile, we were higher than almost two-thirds of the state, so we were right near that 60 mark. And that means that that test in particular, even though we didn't meet the 500, we did do better than, than 59% of the state. It means that that might be a more rigorous grade level, or what was being asked this year was a little more rigorous. So just one way to look at it. In terms of math, you'll see that we have, again, some highlighted boxes, and this shows you that in fifth grade, we outperformed the state, and that our growth was higher, and we were at 56 percentile in terms of the achievement percentile. And then I just want to also highlight, in seventh grade, you'll see that even though we fell below the state average in terms of meeting or exceeding, and we were not at that 500 mark in terms of a scaled score, that our growth was high, and we were, again, at 54%, which means that they were really pulling up whatever happened in sixth grade and making more growth in seventh grade. So I'm gonna stop for just a second, because those are two pretty powerful slides, and just ask if there are any questions.
Scott, when we, when we look at these, and we have the highlighted, you know, opportunities that we are either meeting or exceeding, but then we have, you know, five out of six that we're not, how?
Obviously, we want everyone to be meeting or exceeding, that's the goal.
I agree with that, but what I'm getting at is, how much is that looked at as something that needs to be quickly addressed?
Absolutely. So we're concerned about those scores, and we're gonna be taking steps to try to analyze why that is, and look for performance improvements in those areas. You know, obviously, if you're, if you're picking fourth grade English Language Arts, you know, so we're at 49 versus 53, you know, that could be one or two students, you know, that made the difference there. So the, you know, you see, obviously, we're concerned with the grade three reading scores this first year. And then we're concerned overall with the eighth grade performance. So we're gonna see a trend in eighth grade, and not, not particularly, sometimes that's a cohort, it may not be, we have to look at trend data over time, too. And I don't think Meredith put it into this presentation, but eventually, once the Legacy MCAS is in, once the Next Generation MCAS has been placed for several years, we have to see how are we trending over time.
Right.
That's a point to add. That one-time comparison.
It's changed so much from parked, MCAS, back, forth, paper, to computer, to different format on the computer, so.
Yeah. So obviously, you're gonna, you're gonna make an analysis in two ways. One, looking at the eighth grade, is there, you know, do we consistently, year after year, see a concern in eighth grade, and is this something we need to address there? Is that cohort just a, a cohort that's struggling? You know, obviously, you'd be, you know, you'd be more pleased if the median expectation was 35%, but the student growth was 60% in the same hour, those kids made great growth. Obviously, that's not the case, because the, the growth is 37.8, and you'd wanna say, so you'd like to see, we're looking at all that specific analysis. But, but yeah, so all those things are being looked at and addressed. But I, I think, I don't know if you used the word critical, or, I'm not sure what you use, word you use in terms of immediately addressed, or?
What I was, I guess, getting, when you look at these, is there something that instantaneously we say, "There's a problem, we need to address it," or do we look at it and say, "We need to get a three- or a four-year run?"
I think, I think both. So obviously, there's someplace where you're gonna look and say, "There's a concern there." So I don't know if I'd use the word problem, but we'd say, "There's a concern, we have to look at that concern, and why do we think that data played out that way?" And then also begin to look at it over time, and making the analysis of, of is, is there instructional or curriculum issue that needs to be addressed? And that, sometimes that's a hard piece to get at, to flesh that out of, is there a curriculum instructional piece that needs to be addressed? And we're gonna see foreshadowing, you know, we're still concerned about our science scores in, in, in grades five and grade eight, and that's been a concern for many years. When I was the high school principal, I said, "We've, eighth grade science seems to be our bugaboo test that we're struggling to have students perform well on." And then we also have to look at the global picture, foreshadowing, our end result is very strong. So our 10th grade scores are very strong and support above the state. Our SAT scores are actually very, those are fairly strong SAT scores. So, you know, you have to take all those things into consideration when, when analyzing this. But clearly, yeah, I mean, we'd like to see everyone be at or above the state average. I mean, that, that would be our stated goal, and if, when places aren't there, we have to take a look at why that is, and make an analysis, and try to improve performance.
We have also spent time just in different groups, so working with department chairs or working with the literacy director or the math coach, trying to analyze what these numbers mean. So this is kind of the global, this is where we're at, but to give you an example, on the math slide, I pointed out seventh grade as having high growth. You look at that and you say, "All right, the district is at 41%, the state is at 46%." But last year, that same group, their sixth grade number, they were at 33%. So they went from 33 to 41. So even though I'm representing this kind of holistically, as we start to develop data points year after year, we can start showing the trends of cohorts. So how students perform in sixth, and then what they perform like in seventh, and what they perform like in eighth, which will give us a more rounded picture. The other thing that we're doing is looking at just multiple aspects of the assessment. For example, it used to be that with math tests, that 70% of it was actually like reading comprehension and writing, and being able to answer the word problem, and not just pluck the numbers out, but know what is being asked for. So we're looking at, we do something called an item analysis, but we're looking at the items and trying to figure out where trends might exist. I know last year, the math department looked at that holistically, and they addressed a particular strand that they had some concerns about, and they had a discussion about how often during seventh grade, or during eighth grade, or during ninth grade, are these particular pieces covered? And they found particular grade levels where they wanted to fortify that and add more instruction, either reteach or provide different lessons to make sure that students really understand kind of this concept that was a trend throughout. And as Scott said, a lot of that does manifest as 10th grade, because they get to the point where when they take that final assessment, they are performing very highly.
And that's just a good example of the type of analysis that's occurring all the time as we look at this data. And this has one data point, I mean, we look at other data points as well.
Yeah. Thank you. So I want to move into gap narrowing, and this is kind of the industry term for how our different subgroups get reported out, again, leading up into Scott's presentation in November. So I decided to represent this over three slides, elementary, middle school, and high school, and be able to talk a little bit about how students are doing, if you compare all students to those that the state would identify as economically disadvantaged, and then those students with disabilities. So you can see in the blue bands here that, and I'm gonna focus particularly on students with disabilities, that our achievement percentile is at 65%, meaning that the Carver students with disabilities, as identified by the state, gets compared to other students with that designation around the state, and that we are performing at the 65th percentile, which speaks very highly to where we're at. So all of our students are at 40% for English Language Arts, 50% for economically disadvantaged, and 65% for students with disabilities. You'll see that again, that same kind of trend echoed with math, even though a slightly different percentile, but 36% for all students, 43 for economically disadvantaged, and 45 for students with disabilities. So that's showing that we are doing well with those subgroups, which will again count as part of our accountability formula. With middle school, you can see that our students with disabilities in English Language Arts outperform all students in both ELA and in math as well, in terms of the achievement percentile. And then in high school, we don't have that achievement percentile, because the Legacy MCAS has a different set of metrics. But this shows you for the composite performance index, which is how you would rate where you're at, 99.5% of our students in English Language Arts, or our CPI is 99.5, for all students, 100 for economically disadvantaged, and 96.9 for students with disabilities. And then math is in that middle column, and science is at the end.
And on the CPI, you earn 100 points, or 100% for every student who scores advanced or proficient on the Legacy MCAS. So if the, so if they met the, if they met the standard, so in essence, economically disadvantaged students, all of them scored advanced or proficient. So that's a, a strong, a strong statement.
Yeah.
For 10th grade.
Thank you. So just to show you how that looks kind of on a graph, I just pulled out all students compared to students with disabilities, and looked at that percentile piece, third through eighth, and you can see where the lines kind of mirror one another. And then also, just to plop in that CPI score, so blue here is represented in 10th grade as 99.5, and then our students with disabilities in orange. So they all move upward towards the end. And then math, you'll also notice how well our students with disabilities did particularly in sixth, seventh, eighth grade as they grew, and then ultimately at 10th grade, 97% for all students, and 84.4 for students with disabilities. Just another way to look at it. All right, so now we're gonna look at our comparison data, and this is something that we do every year, and it shows how we perform compared to other local districts. So in terms of English Language Arts, we'll start with fifth grade, we're reporting out the same that we did last year, fifth grade, eighth grade, and 10th grade, so end of elementary, middle, and the end of the MCAS assessment in 10th grade. So we were neck and neck with the state in regards to fifth grade English Language Arts. You can see eighth grade English Language Arts, we're at the bottom of the local districts that we compared to, as we mentioned before, that there were some concerns about those scores. And then in 10th grade, we're back up to 98.
Middle school is rough, man.
And then in terms of mathematics, we outperform the state in fifth grade. Again, a tough year for eighth grade, and then in 10th grade, we're at the top of the pack.
See? They're just skewed.
And then, lastly, in terms of science, I actually have some good news for science, if I can get my slide to move forward. Whoops, come back.
Looking at those numbers, I, I don't get how in the eighth grade, they could go from 27 and be at 92 in 10th grade.
So a couple of things, they're different, different tests, as a reminder, and then...
Incentive.
Yep. And then the other piece is there, it is a high-stakes assessment, so students need it in order to graduate and take it very seriously. Yep. So.
Is that really a problem? Are we not taking it as seriously as we should be in the eighth grade?
I, I...
No, I mean, I honestly, I wouldn't get that focused on, or that concerned about the individual eighth grade scores. I mean, obviously, that might be, that might be a cohort issue in terms of, we want to see that group perform better. I mean, if you look historically over time, so I go, I'm going back to the time which I was principal, historically, if you look at our MCAS scores, which is a different test, it's a whole different test piece. Eighth grade actually had historically been a strong point for us, especially in ELA. We pretty consistently scored above the state average in eighth grade in ELA. So, and we haven't had a huge change in curriculum or teachers. The test changed, so maybe we need to look at the curriculum piece of it a little bit. But it's not like I have a major concern there with what's happening curriculum instruction-wise in eighth grade, but obviously, we have a concern about that group of students who struggle. They, you know, obviously, there's a pattern there of that eighth grade group didn't perform well, so we're gonna have to look at that eighth grade group and say, "What can we do to best support that group so that they can improve their performance, so that they can reach where our 10th grade students are?"
So you'd be looking at, seeing what they were doing in grade five as a group.
Right. Right, try, we'll look over how, how have they grown, how has that cohort specifically done?
That was, that was presented to us before, that was, I think, when we were, it's been hard, because everything's been changing so much, though.
Yep. And then in terms of science, fifth grade is at 40%, and then eighth grade is at 29%, but I have a but. And that is, if you look at where eighth grade science was last year, it was at 21%. So we had a new group of kids take this assessment, and we're at 29. So we have made progress in terms of eighth grade performance. Science is the assessment that is not assessed every single year. So we can't look at how these kiddos did as seventh graders, or how they did as sixth graders. We just provide the assessment, or the state provides the assessment, in fifth and eighth grade, and there is a lot of road to cover in terms of content between fifth grade and eighth grade. So the test itself is pulling from all sorts of different strands of science. I do want to note that this particular class is the first class that has had three years of an updated curriculum, so they had it as sixth graders, they had it as seventh graders, they had it as eighth graders. And even though it was new each year, meaning that when they had it as sixth graders, it was the first time sixth grade teachers were teaching it, when they had it as seventh graders, first time seventh grade was teaching it, that that programmatic change has manifested in an 8% increase. So that's one of the things that we like to look at. We also can drill down and look at, in terms of questions and domains, we can look at the discrepancy between how we do and how the state does. we do and how the state does. And in our open response questions, in the past, we might be eleven points behind the state, now we're at seven points behind the state. So we're making growth through this. I'm excited to see what next year looks like. And then with tenth grade science, we are at seventy-three percent.
The only caveat I'd make for tenth grade science is we have to remember, science is the only MCAS in which schools are offered choices on which MCAS they take. So this isn't even a comparison of kids aren't taking the same test. So this is probably the least, least valuable data, because students can take science and engineering, they can take chemistry, and they take biology, or they can take physics as their MCAS exam.
In ninth or tenth?
Ninth, tenth grade. Majority, majority of schools take biology. So more, more schools than not, their, their MCAS assessment is biology. We give intro to physics in ninth grade. And so we actually, yeah, I would say we give a test that's not the typical test, more, more give biology than intro to physics. And if you actually looked at our intro to physics scores this year individually, they were pretty strong. So our ninth, our ninth grade is this year, performed well in intro to physics. So this tenth grade comparison, and since, since students can take the test in different grades and can take different tests, this is just summary data of your overall percentage. So I don't know, I can't speak specifically to West Bridgewater or Silver Lake in terms of what they're taking, whether they're taking biology or not. But there's a good, there's a chance that one of those schools, their kids took biology in tenth grade as their MCAS exam versus our kids taking intro to physics in ninth grade. Because more, more, and that was a choice the district made several years ago to invest in the intro to physics, in terms of why we made that decision to give it in ninth grade. And there was a lot of factors going into that, like one just being that, that actually breaks up your MCAS exam for graduation. So in tenth grade, you don't have to take all three, biology, math, and English. You get to take physics in ninth grade. And then most of our students get over that hurdle in ninth grade. Most students pass that MCAS exam in ninth grade, and they've covered that hurdle and check it off in the grade nine. And then, at the time, the science, and I'll say, even the superintendent at the time was a huge supporter of what's called Physics First, and that physics being your most important science for you to take. So the former superintendent, Sora, was a huge supporter of us taking the intro to physics exam. And so we followed that pattern. But I just want to make that point that this is actually a comparison of students taking different tests at different grades.
You know, and, I mean, forgive me if I'm wrong, Meredith, but you go back, like standardized testing, the intent of standardized testing is really for academic, is for, for the district, not so much the student. I mean, it's really supposed to be looking at the district and how the district is doing achieving the goals that are established. Ultimately, I mean, that's really the goal. I don't know where it transitioned into being more student-centered that way.
I think the fact that tenth grade is high stakes and is a graduation requirement in, has become, like they've been reporting out, plus no child left behind required, you know, students to make adequate yearly progress, or to, to feed into that formula. I will say that proponents of standardized testing, or proponents of MCAS, will say that one of the reasons that we're top in the nation, and that we're competitive if Massachusetts extracts their scores from national tests that are compared globally, and enters in just Massachusetts' numbers, that we perform very highly compared to other countries, that a lot of that is because they say that we have regress frameworks, that we have these annual assessments, and that we take those pieces seriously. You can find as many arguments against it as you can find for it. So...
And, and just know that, you know, ultimately, it's one data point. We're always looking at all this data and trying to make the best decisions we can to inform instruction and curriculum practices and assessment practices within the district, you know. And recently, the elementary school just went through data meetings through, through, from grades all the way through K through five, where they had a full, teachers had a full day professional development day, in which they looked at a range of data to make decisions about how they're going to best support their students individually in their classrooms. So that, that's kind of always ongoing work that's happening, and this is, this is just part of, part of the picture.
Yes.
And this is going to, you're going to tell that.
Yep. And the one other piece that I was going to point out is when we talk about multiple, multiple data points, when Mrs. Holly spoke about AP and SAT, that information was largely very positive. So again, it's that understanding that there are a multitude of different factors that go into this. And then the achievement and the growth pieces that I just mentioned, in addition to other indicators, play into the new accountability formula. And as I mentioned earlier, Scott will give an update on this in November. But it used to be that districts were given a level designation, so either level one, level two, level three, level four, level five, and schools as well. And they put, when Park began, they said anyone that was willing to do Park would be held harmless, so we're going to put you on hold. So whatever you're at, whatever level you're at, you're just going to stay at that level unless you go up, and then you will be at that level. But you can't go backwards, because you're trying on this new assessment. So now with ESSA and the changes in accountability, that whole grace period has ended, and there is new accountability reporting. And instead of five levels, there are five different designations, but they're no longer called levels, one through five. And so Scott will present this in November, but our current designation, which is available to the public, so they would see this if they looked, says partially meeting targets. And as I mentioned, Scott will explain more about that in November.
And the only, the only piece I want to add to that is, the state has broken it down into two big categories. One is schools requiring intervention or assistance, or schools not requiring intervention or assistance. So we were identified as a school not requiring intervention or assistance, but also partially meeting targets. And we'll go, we'll kind of, that data, the MCAS data is part of that, but there's other, there's also other pieces of your accountability data. And we felt like it would be a little bit too much of information overload tonight to do all the MCAS data and then tie it, then do all the accountability data. So this will lead us into the accountability presentation in November, which, well, so we'll refer back to this MCAS data, because that's part of the accountability reporting. So a lot, a lot of time, and saying a lot, this is foreshadowed, this is stepping towards our next meeting in November of what's going to come next.
Any questions?
I have one.
Yep.
Why does the state differentiate our students between all students in English Language Arts and mathematics, and economically disadvantaged, and students with disabilities? Why do they, why do they take those data points separately?
So they actually pull out a bunch of different subgroups. So under the new accountability framework, they actually look at something called the lowest twenty-five percent, which, again, you'll hear about next month. But in the past, they had something called high needs, which would be a student with disabilities that also may be economically disadvantaged. They also look at other minority subgroups, but you have to have, for those designations, you have to have twenty students in a subgroup. So last year, for example, our English Language learners, we did not have twenty. So we had fewer. This year, we'll see where we end up, in whether or not that will be reported out, because we've had an increase in that population. But the idea behind that is anytime you hit that sample size of over twenty, that the state is going to report out on that. So we have more than twenty students that are economically disadvantaged, and more than twenty students that have disabilities.
And the logic question of why, ultimately, Meredith talked about gap narrowing. And if you look historically over time, over twenty years of testing, that certain groups just don't, didn't perform as well. So the state has established as one of their goals to have all students achieve at a high level. And they said, the only way we can assure that all students achieve at a high level is to, in essence, break down some of those subgroups, and identify the subgroups that historically were not performing well, and identify them so that they didn't get lumped into the hole. So that school districts wouldn't look at the hole and say, ah, our whole scores are well, they're strong. So we don't have, we don't need to narrow the gaps. So the state's actually identified, and so is the federal government actually through ESSA, that one of their goals is to bring every, everyone up to a high level of performance. And that, so they identified historic, groups who historically had performed lower. So that, that's why that designation is there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Meredith. All right, moving on. Great, great opening of track and field. Well, so we had our first game Friday night, and I think that was really a great success. I had a great turnout from the community. I know it's on the agenda, but we also had a great turnout for the Dick Ward dedication at the elementary school, for the new gymnasium. So Friday night was really a great night for the district, for the community of Carver. You know, having that first game at that field, the kids were just really excited and proud of it. So that was really, I don't know what else to say about it, besides that they, they were proud, and their pride was tangible. And that's a good thing. I think that's part of the reason why we've built that field. It's going to be a great complex for the community. We are going to have a formalized grand opening, and very similar to, you know, the new elementary school, is that we just weren't sure when the track was going to be completed. And we really didn't know that we were going to be able to play there Friday night until really Tuesday. They hadn't striped the lines of the track yet, there were some pieces that still needed to happen. So we didn't feel like we had the appropriate time to plan an official grand opening ceremony. And we didn't want to plan one and then not have it, because the track and the field wasn't ready. So remember, at the elementary school, we was going to have our grand opening in August. We ended up deferring that, because we wanted to make sure the complex was really done, and we had it later on after school had actually opened. So we're taking the same approach with the track and field. So we are planning on having a grand opening ceremony for that field, though teams have been playing on it. Went to the field hockey game today, field hockey played their first home game on the field. And every, every team is going to get at least one home game, possibly more than one, on the, on the new field, which is great. The ceremony is tentatively scheduled for Saturday, November third. We're actually working with the Hitchcock family, who the field is dedicated in honor to, to ensure that they can be there and be part of the ceremony. So right now, we've tentatively scheduled for Saturday, November third, at ten o'clock. Ceremony's going to include several speakers, including representatives from CPA, the Field Study Committee, the school. There'll be an official Ruben County event. We'll open the track and field up for public tours. I don't know if you necessarily need a tour of it, but you can walk around, check it out, which you can do anyhow. And then we also plan on having, Mrs. Schultz is working with the youth sports to try to maybe plan a jamboree that day, have as many youth sports playing that day as we can. So we're excited about how we've started with the track and field, and we're looking forward to the grand opening, which is tentatively Saturday, November third. Once that's finalized, like I said, we're just trying to work with the Hitchcock family to ensure that they can be there to be part of the ceremony. And actually, that, that plaque has, it looks great where it is. The plaque in honor of William Hitchcock was in a different spot. It was kind of off to the side, and now it's more in a central location as you come into the gate. And the, the family was there Friday night for the ceremony, and, and they, they want to work with us to be part of it on November third. So once that date's finalized, we'll get that out to everyone, and the entire community will be invited.
Do you want me to play this?
Uh, I have the time-lapse video. I was going to necessarily show the time-lapse video. We showed it at the last meeting, and if people want to see it, we surely can. But I just put it in the background for the school committee members, so that they, they can see it. So I don't know if there's any other thoughts right now on the opening of the track and field?
No.
School committee policy manual. So this was a recommendation at our last meeting, and I just wanted to show the committee this. And we have a next step in this process, which will, I mean, we'll do through the policy subcommittee, we'll have some discussions about it, is we basically said we were going to put the policy manual online with links. So it's, it's up, it's ready. So the policy menu, the whole policy menu is now on the Carver website. You can go to School Committee, Policy Manual, and instead of a PDF, that's the whole document, you can just pick a policy. You know, so if you wanted to, you know, if you wanted to, pick, I picked the wellness policy. Or Meredith, if you want to pick a policy.
I'm trying to move down. Wellness policy. I got it.
And so that opens up to that specific policy. It's a PDF of that policy, but it's not a PDF of the whole document. So it's more accessible for people, and that they can look at that.
Reading better now, Gina?
It's a Gina, Gina did the key, Gina did the key work on this. She did this whole thing.
Thank you very much.
She made it, she created it all as a PDF, she put it all online.
This is perfect.
And the other thing, we, what we haven't done yet, because it's been put from the committee, we had talked about identifying some key policies we thought people would reference, you know, frequently reference policies, and kind of separating them out from this larger list. I think the list is pretty discernible, you can take a look at it and find things. But the bottom line, there's still a lot of sections.
There, there is, but I, you're, the structure of this and the setup is really well done.
Yeah.
Easy to me, it's easy to find what you're looking for.
Right. So, and then we had talked about just doing some, like I said, some, so we'll have to have a conversation about what, what are, what do we think are going to be the frequently accessed policies that people want to take.
Top ten, sort of.
And we can set, we can separate those out. So that's our next step in that process. So I just wanted to give the committee an update on where that stood.
You might want to put a warning up on the top where it says click here to download the complete policy manual.
You can, if you, you can if you want to.
You've got lots of ink.
All right, we're ready, moving on?
Yeah.
Moving on.
Capital outlay. So I'm going to turn this to Brad, and Brad's going to do a quick overview of our capital outlay presentation, and...
Doing the same format as we did last year.
Yep.
And we'll go over the long-term planning for the middle high school.
You can start, I'll catch him.
Okay. Go to slide two. So this is the total that we're, let back up one. Or no, you're there. Just going to blow it up a little bit. This is the total we're asking or requesting for FY twenty. Carver Elementary School, still zero, same as last year, until we get a full analysis of what a replacement cycle will be for certain items. Townwide Technology's a hundred forty-two thousand, Transportation's a hundred sixty, just over one sixty. And the middle high school's two seventy-five, bringing the school's total request to five hundred seventy-seven thousand. Out of an estimated nine hundred and fifty thousand that's available, this number's based on last year's projection for FY twenty. I have not got actuals for FY twenty and beyond as they stand for the proposal from the town administrator, but that'll be coming out next week, I hope. So again, we're looking already for just over, let's say, fifty percent of the total allotment available. I think that number for the town, though, will decrease, because I know through our joint meetings, that was mentioned that some new growth money would be coming out of capital and into operational budgets. So that nine fifty could come down a little bit, which would impact our overall allotment available for the townwide. For CES, again, we're waiting for the replacement plans for capital items, and that item list is to be determined. For townwide technology...
Let's take it a second.
For town expenses, for upgrades, they've requested twenty-five thousand. Various Chromebooks, we have a few grade levels that have outstanding needs. Roughly, I think I jotted down, Meredith, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it was like about fifty Chromebooks was the number.
Yep.
And that's what that twelve thousand dollar number represents. PC replacement for the middle high school, we have a recycle replacement plan for our desktops, about thirty thousand dollars worth are due this upcoming year. Townwide Comcast one gig, that's a recurring item that we've had on there for the past year as well, and a new server for fifty thousand. Again, these are all for FY twenty for next school year. Transportation, which is one, my major concern right now is, we have a, a kind of a stack of buses. We bought, in two thousand eight, four buses were purchased. It kind of left us in a little bit of a balloon year, I want to say, because those are becoming high mileage, and they need to be replaced. So this, last year, we were able to get one to replace a two thousand eight. Next year, we'll get hopefully one to replace two thousand eight. The following year, we'll look to get two seventy-one passengers to replace two thousand eight, and we're kind of back on that cycle that's one to two buses per year, rather than that lump sum before that we had back in the way when we purchased these. So that's just under eighty thousand. We need a seven D minivan. Our special routes have been kind of all over the map, and those have also received high mileage. So we're looking for thirty-one thousand for that. And one seven D wheelchair minivan. We have seen an increase in wheelchair need for our minivans. Currently only have two. This would give us a third. One of them actually already is high mileage, that we would have that to become our spare. And the new one we just bought actually last year, we did get one of these last year, already has twenty thousand miles on it from under one year use of service. So again, that's fifty thousand that we'd like to have to purchase one more seven D wheelchair minivan. The big items at the middle high school, replace all cameras. We finally got a more concrete estimate. I know this was kind of the back and forth last year of, we had a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar number on there. That was from a quote many moons ago. I don't know exactly. I, when I came on board, that's what it was on there, so I rolled with it. But we were able to receive a new quote from Oakers, who's on the state bid list, and they committed a hundred thousand to replace all the cameras at the middle high school. The basketball, baskets at the middle, at the high school gym need replacement. That was an estimated fifteen thousand. Repaint tennis and basketball courts, that's sixty thousand. In the past, this has been done through CPC money, I've been told. So this may be able to pull off of the capital line item. In the past, this has been done through CPC money, I've been told. So this may be able to pull off of the capital line item budget and run off CPC with their approval. But again, I just wanted to have that on there for now. So at least we are requesting a funding source. If it's not capital, hopefully CPC will pick it up. And updated culinary classroom, we have a hundred thousand dollars budget in there. Scott, I don't know if you had anything specific on that. I don't, I don't know if they were looking for any like specific design or I, I don't know the, this.
No, we, we be in the process of designing the culinary classroom. It's been a request for a couple of years in terms of upgrading chef space. And this also goes back, goes into a little bit of, well, it's a foreshadowing to a discussion we're going to have later on in terms of restructuring and maybe looking to add some programs. The culinary program is already a strength within our building and it's really a strength in a adequate, adequate, inadequate facility. Antiquated was the word I was looking for. I was going adequate. It's an antiquated facility. So it's really what he's working with, it's tremendous what, what, what actually what we've been able to do with that program. So that's a program within the district that we'd like to highlight as a strength. And as we look at numbers of enrollment and students and there is some, some thought of if we can have a couple of programs that become signature programs that invite students to stay in the district as options that are outside of, you know, English, math, science, social studies, the culinary space is a place to do that. And it really is a facility that needs to be totally upgraded. So the upgrade there would be to go to make it more like a, really make the shift or complete the shift from a home ec classroom to a culinary classroom. So it would have, look like a, a kitchen in a restaurant versus a kitchen in your home. And right now, a lot of ways it looks like a kitchen in your home. And the goal would be to have students have the opportunity to work on the same, on and with the same materials they'd be working in a professional restaurant.
In FY '21, we'd like to add irrigation to the fields that do not have it. Middle high school cafeteria equipment, we've been getting about 15,000 every two, three years. I like to keep with that. Middle high school speaker upgrade, there's a few that are out in various areas. We'd like to get them back on and upgraded. Gymnastics, gymnastics equipment for 35,000. And a locker room replacement. You'll see there's a hundred thousand earmarked on there because that total project was estimated at
Nine.
Nine fifty?
Nine.
Nine fifty. And what we'd like to do is, that's a big number to hit all in one year, 950,000. So thought process on behind this of, I won't say nickel and diming it, but solely incrementing it over the five years would be to have money built up that if we decided on, if you look at the spreadsheet that you'll see next. In FY '23, if there's enough money allocated over the course of those three years, even if we could just do one locker room, boys or girls, be better than having both existing.
That only totals nine, what you've got.
The whole total is nine, yep.
All right.
So if you, on this spreadsheet, if you look actually on that, if you look across, you know, it's small, locker room placement, you'll see it's scattered piecemeal over the course of, it's actually six years, but money's only allocated in five to get to that whole dollar amount. But in three years, if we have enough and we've built up to say, hey, let's replace one of them now. We have, we know we'll have the money for the next one in two years. That's an option to look at as well.
Brad, where are you getting your estimates from?
Previous worksheets that people got quotes from and estimates. I want to say there was a big survey done by Gale Associates, maybe?
Well, it wasn't Gale. It's, it's slipping my mind what it is by now. King Scott, Habib though too. This is actually going, one was Habib and one was King Scott. So we've had two, like building assessments where they came out and gave, gave a total assessment of the entire building and what needed to be replaced with estimates. That, that work was actually done, it's pretty old now. It's probably two or three years, probably three or four years old, going back to before the new building of the elementary school.
Brad, what is that in 2024? It's cut off. I can't see what it is. It says odd renovation for three quarters of a million.
Yep, that's auditorium renovation.
Auditorium.
Okay.
Yep.
And that would be a total renovation, all new seats, sound, lighting.
You say you want to replace the baskets in the high school gym. Are you talking about the whole, whole board, everything?
Everything.
Oh, are you talking on the main ones or the four side ones?
All of them.
All of them.
That was what was requested.
And when you, you're really at the middle high school, you know, we did the accelerator repair project with the new roof, doors, doors and windows, which obviously extended the life of that building. But there's still pieces within that building that need to be brought up to date over time. And that's where our capital requests really lie. So when you look at that, it's really, you know, we talked about the culinary classroom. We talked about auditorium renovation, library renovation, the locker rooms, eventually the parking lot. And then we also in our priority list thought a little bit about, we felt like we needed to complete some projects. So irrigation of the fields kind of moved up on our priority list a little bit saying, we've just built this beautiful new state of the art stadium. And we have new fields at the elementary school. Let's get all of our fields up to a place where they can be supported and, and irrigated and maintained. And like that would be a completion of that concept of improving all the field space within the district. And clearly we, you know, you might have people who might argue that, you know, updating the auditorium or library, all things educational space in the building might be important, more important than the irrigation. But we also, as an administrative team, as we looked at these things, we kind of thought, let's complete projects too. You know, so the irrigation is completing that project of bringing our field space in the town up to date.
Brad, how up to date is that irrigation quote? Is that something that happened with, when we were building out the?
That was a rough estimate from the build out, yeah. Yeah. Cause I think they had a $200,000 number in there.
Mm-hmm.
And to be honest, I mean, all these are top priorities. We struggle when we make this list of
Sure.
breaking it out. But realistically, when you look at what money's available over the course of 10 years, we felt like putting, the laying out this way that we have it now fits into the schedule as best as possible. Again, this now goes to capital outlay committee that kind of moves it around a little bit. So it fits in their overall grand scheme. But when we looked at the money available, we said, we'd love to have all these priority one, but realistically, you got to spread them out.
Yeah. So from my perspective, when we look at this kind of 10-year capital plan, it's really looking at identifying the places, the spaces in the buildings that we feel need to be upgraded. And obviously we're going to work with the town, we're going to work with capital outlay and make the decisions of where those things fit into the budget. And, and there might be a reality of where we prioritize something may not be where it fits in the budget. It may, when capital outlay plan goes to town meeting, that plan might look a little bit different than what you approved here tonight. But we, you know, those are, those are good discussions and, and we advocate for our positions and, and then also try to balance the needs of the entire town. So we're, we're always involved in that process. So in my mind, it's just kind of laying out, hey, these are the, these are the things we feel like over the next 10 years really need to be upgraded within our facilities. And obviously our, our facilities are a much better place than they were two or three years ago. And that's been through the work of the, the committee and the town and capital outlay. And so, you know, we want to continue that effort.
And the scary part is that it won't be too many years before we're looking at an elementary list like this that needs honestly
Well, yeah, slow down, man. Cause I was going to say the one thing that's not on this list that's been on there for the past decade is a, a new track and field.
A new track and field has been on the
That's been on there for a long time and that is not there.
One thing with the track and field too, I noted is the, the refinishing of the track needs to be repainted every five to seven years. And the cost estimate I got from Activitas was 160 grand. We put that in for FY '20. Again, that may be able to be qualified for CPC funds. That's why I have it highlighted. But we do have five to seven year window to think about where that money can come from.
So I guess this is, this is looking for a vote. So, yes?
Yes.
Uh, yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the 10-year school capital improvement plan.
Second.
You're the only other one, man.
She's motion made and seconded. So any questions on the prioritization here or?
I just had a question about the concession stand in, in 22. 22, right? Yeah.
Yeah, three years away.
Yeah. I was speaking to someone today. Is there something we could, an avenue we could pursue to have the, the students at Old Colony, maybe make this a project?
Yeah, we've, we've, we've discussed, there's a bunch of options I think on the table that haven't thoroughly been discussed by the team yet that's sitting on that project. Such as people have offered to, if we, if we buy the material and supply, they'll build it. We've also, the counter to that though is that, I think that happened with the last concession stand that we had and there was a couple of minor issues with that.
Have to be clear.
Yeah, we'd have to make sure that everyone who worked on it was built to code and
It was probably a little different then.
Yeah, I totally believe it. I totally believe it. And the same for, we've heard about Old Colony too, using, utilizing them for again, purchasing materials.
Does that be our own, our own students, so some of our own students getting into the building trades and staying up to code and maybe save the town some money.
Exactly. Exactly. Those are all options that we've heard.
I mean, something, something Mr. Schultz even thrown out now, this is my, this is more out of the box thinking. But we've been trying to think of out of the box ways to get the concession stand done. So it's on the capital list. We want to put it on the capital list, but we're not, we're definitely open to
Other options.
Definitely a couple of ones. You know, even using our own students and possibly talk about building a program where if we could work with someone in terms of construction management and have someone oversee the project and have some of our own students do it over a two or three year project. And actually investing our own students into building it. In terms of design, using, using our, our own kids to do it, which would be an interesting prospect. And then, and I think that would be a nice thing to sell in terms of, we just need the community, we need, you know, capital outlay or whoever.
Yeah.
To fill the materials. But if we could find someone who could work with our students to do it, that would be, that would be great.
Probably get done faster. Than wait until 2022.
I mean, we looked at it though, why, why we pushed that backwards, we looked at, honestly, it was that versus irrigation. And the amount of use that that concession stand would get over the irrigation, we, irrigation much outweighs the
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. No, that is, that we, we have heard a couple of different options and that's, one that was on the table was about
I think we can safely say we'll exhaust all the options and, and hopefully, you know, that, that line item becomes substantially lower when it's able to just do, you know, bringing the, bringing the actual materials to the table, that type of conversation.
Even that maybe be able to get discounted somewhere.
It'd be great. Yeah, it'd be great.
So just something to, to talk about, you know, there are certain things that, that, you know, all students deal with on a regular daily basis that seems to get pushed off a lot. And just maybe some reasoning behind why we would say bathrooms and lockers and things that impact every student every day. These are things that are constantly getting, and I know it's because it's a big sum to do that, but we keep moving it off and off and off and off. And I mean, basically our lockers are in the building for, those things are not used. They're useless.
Yeah, the, the issue thing that keeps, keeps pushing the locker shoe off and maybe this would change if there were better lockers. But there's been a huge trend in school districts of students not using their lockers. And not even, not in Carver, just in general in schools.
Right.
There's, so when we talk to superintendent's groups or the principals groups, it's amazing, especially at the high school level. I think middle school's different, but I think at the high school level, there's a lot of students that aren't, they don't use their lockers, even if they have really nice ones.
Right.
They don't use them. So it's kind of fallen back in the need category because we're saying there's a lot of kids who aren't using their locker, but even if we built nice new shiny lockers, they may not use them.
Well, we, we also approved eighth grade, we also approved eighth grade this year to, to carry backpacks as well and not use lockers as well. So you're really just looking at six and seven.
Bathroom fixtures is a good point. I mean, that's something we, we are
It's a comment I hear a lot of.
Yeah, we, we banty back and forth and we actually right now, we're replacing all the stalls in the bathrooms. We haven't talked about this yet as a committee, but, so we are actually, all the stalls themselves, all the partitions
Yeah.
have all been purchased and are in the process of being replaced. And, you know, doing the fixtures would be a completion of that project if we went with that theory of completing projects. Cause that would give the bathroom new fixtures. You know, it's not going to be new tile, but it's going to be all new fixtures, all new partitions.
So then this is, so what's here then is really just for sinks and toilets and structure.
Correct. So the partitions are going to be replaced.
But the water's fine, right?
And Brad, these are beautiful numbers. So at the end of the day, if, if things come in under, what, how's the reallocation of the funds, what happens?
It gets closed out and it gets put into
Back to capital.
Okay. So like looking at it, like tennis and, and basketball courts, 60 grand. It seems, I think I did this with, with you last year and I got 70% off of the cameras. So I'm, I'm working in the right direction. But so if, if we were able to get those lower, that doesn't move something else up. It just happens the money go back in.
Correct.
Gotcha. Gotcha. Okay. And replace the locker rooms, that's an old, old, old quote. I know that.
That's an old quote.
Yeah. I'd, I'd be interested to see a newer one, just to get an idea on a number. I mean.
Yeah, I'll be honest though, it's hard to, in my last district, you see this, it's hard to call them every couple of years. And when they know the project's never going to go through. To get it on its quote.
I mean, it's on there.
It, it is, but if, if you're looking at the following year.
Yeah.
Yeah, to firm it up.
Twenty one.
That'd be good. Other than that, I'm done.
Andy?
No. Have any questions? I've been answered.
See nothing else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? None opposed? Seniors?
Moving on to community use of school facilities and our, the proposed policy. This is the third time we're discussing the community use of facilities policy. On Wednesday, as referenced earlier, on Wednesday, October 3rd, Andrew hosted a meeting of representatives from all local sports organizations in the recreation committee to review and discuss the proposed policy and fees. As a result of that meeting, we're considering looking at different options for a fee structure. So we're going to have to spend some time to look at that for our local community groups. So my summary of that meeting, and Andrew can build on this, is that I felt that there was a general consensus of the group and we have representatives here too, they can certainly weigh in, is I felt like the consensus of the group was we have these new fields and we need to maintain them. So I think everybody was on board with, we want to properly maintain these new fields. I think there was some recognition that that comes at a cost. And that, and that that cost probably should be borne by all parties. I think our question really was how much of that cost should be borne by all parties? And the youth groups were, you know, they were concerned about what the policy, the cost of the policy was going to, that they were going to incur. And they've asked us to look at that and consider that and to really look at, I think they did a great job staying in their case of the impact of the proposed policy on their fee structures. And, and on ultimately on Carver Kids, because the, most of these were youth sports organizations where our Carver Kids play. So as a committee, we've decided that we would consider looking at different options and different fee structures. But we still feel like it's important to put the policy and the other parts of the policy in place because it's more a little bit of an operational piece. And then also, I think we need to look at the fee structure for our non-Carver groups. So that, that's kind of my summary of where we stand right now. Andrew, I don't know if you want to add on to that at all as the person who set the meeting up and organized it. So thank you again for doing that.
Definitely. Thank you for, again, the kind words, Jim. That was very nice of you. I think the meeting went really well. It was an opportunity to sit with 12 to 15 people in the community that all care about the same thing and that is the kids. So you could really figure really fast that everyone had a united idea what they wanted to do. And that was figure out a way to best help the kids in the district. So the exciting thing was figuring out as a group, really what a plan would be. And I, and I think we kind of came away with some, some different ideas that we would come up with probably something more concrete for 2019. And that would be within enough time so that the spring sports would be able to roll out a plan. And, and we were a little bit late in the game to do anything for winter. But I would like to sponsor these quarterly. I think it's just a good idea, a good group of people. And it's very transparent. So people understand, you know, what, what we need from, and I can hear it from a different, rather than just hearing it from us. You can hear it from a different group. And they also get to hear from us as far as, you know, what our goals are. And they can look at things in a bigger picture than, you know, where we might've been in years past, just trying to get through. There is obvious growth happening in, in, with, with our infrastructure. So we're looking at it saying, you know, there's got to be a much better plan than just, hey, let's just get through the next few months of this sport. So, so I took from that, I had a lot of emails back, just giving a quick synopsis on what the feelings were. But I certainly do agree with you that I'm going to approve, look to move forward the community use of the school facilities. So I want to accept the fee structure that will not be impacted, it will only be impacting the out of the district groups. It won't be for Carver youth, rec and nonprofit groups. So at this point, I'd like to figure out what we can be bringing in for possible business so that we can figure out a better plan in 2019 to really set up a fee structure that works rather than think what we could to really set up a fee structure that works rather than think what we could possibly have. I'd like to see that first and then be able to kind of have another transparent meeting and then we can kind of say, this is where we're at. Um, I think that's the best plan. So that, that would be what I would propose to you guys.
So our, my recommendation tonight is that we move to approve the policy for the use of facilities, except for the fee structure for Carver youth recreational nonprofit groups. And we accept the out of, out of district fee structure as established.
What should I click on?
Uh, you don't necessarily have to pull anything up per se.
Includes, includes both weekday and weekend, I take.
Yeah, if you want to pull up the fee structure, what we're actually talking about. So if you scroll down to the end.
Sorry.
So that'd be my recommendation to the committee. Obviously the committee can take whatever action it chooses.
We have had, um, or youth outside organizations come forward to actually request the turf field already.
So if we go all the way down to the bottom.
Well, Andrew, I'd like to thank you for taking that responsibility, but I think it's important too that, you know, you said you'd like to do this quarterly and we, and we talked about that. I think that's a great idea. Um, I don't necessarily think that that should be on your shoulders. Uh, it is now. Um, but I feel like that's something that, you know, this, this big talk about the town and the schools as separate entities is, is, it's, it's not. We're one big thing and, and so are all these other organizations that are in town. It's all one big group. We're all one town. We all live here. We all work within the same pool of money. We're all working towards the same goal. And I think that in certain circumstances in this town, we've seen better communication, build better bridges and make things happen a little bit better. And I think that's one piece between rec, those local organizations, the schools and, and even the town that I would like to see better communication those quarterly meetings with. I think it's something we, we should assign as a, as a position. So that, you know, if you're not in that position, it's not just going to fall to the wayside, but that's something that's going to continue. Because I think we're going to come up with the best solutions that way. And we're going to limit the circumstances of how this unrolled with, with better communication that way in a more consistent basis. Um, I just think we're going to get to a lot better place than there are, as Jim said, which, uh, next week, I think on Tuesday is our meeting, Jim. So the solar meeting, so, uh, hope to see you there maybe, right? Um, because there are a lot of things in our town that we can do to, to help access this. There's been a lot of talk, Andy, that you've had about possible advertising, uh, to, with the new field. And, and there's lots of ways that we can come up with things to make this work better for this town. And I just think the more minds that we put together on it, the better off we're going to be that way. Um, I know there's transitions in rec and there are things being developed and moved. There are some changes that are going on here. So it just seems to me that if we really want a better for this town, we need to work together to make that happen on a more consistent basis because I think we'll come up with better conclusions that way.
So the only piece I would add is that, uh, you know, obviously throughout the process, we've been talking about that this, whatever fee structure is implemented, wouldn't be implemented until the spring or until next year. So we've been saying that all along. And I think so, so our thought process has been if we're saying we're not going to implement this until the spring or until next year, we should really take the time to have those discussions and, and look at the structure. But ultimately, I just want also everybody to be aware, there, there's going to be a fee structure of some type. Uh, it's going to exist, you know, not, so we're look, we're willing to do something that's different than what was proposed. But there, there's most likely going to be, there's going to be a fee structure for our community, uh, organizations. Uh, if we look down.
Right.
Yeah, it would have, and so what I guess, what we're recommending is that we accept, or if you can scroll down a little bit more. Where it says other, including Carver for profit hourly pricing. So in essence, what we're recommending is that we adopt this part of the policy tonight and saying that we're going to, we're going to look, we're still going to look at the other policies, but we want to put these in place because we want to start charging those outside groups who might want to use the turf field. I see the town administrator has his hand up.
Yeah, please, Mike.
So that part, the last part for outside groups of for profit, able to affect.
If, if, if the, if adopted, yes.
Yep.
So I just clarify.
Yep. So I say, I want to scroll that down. So this other, including Carver, Carver for profit hourly pricing. Would if the, if the, if that motion was made and the committee moved forward on that. Because I kind of made the motion, but I can't make the motion.
So, and, and I understand, but I think we, the, there are parts outside of that, uh, which are also part of your, your conversation here. We also need to discuss field access. And although we don't necessarily have to vote on a policy as of right now with that, I think that should be part of a discussion so that the public is more aware of, of what that access is and what it should be right now. Because they paid for this field. So I think that's a conversation that's happening out in Carver. So I, I think it's part of a conversation that we should have a little bit right now about what that's going to be because that field is now open.
So should we use?
I would say we move forward on the policy and then we can go into that discussion. That's my opinion.
Okay, sure. Yep.
So I take a motion. If you can, if you can, uh, clarify, maybe clarify the motion a little bit.
Yeah, I'm not, do you have a motion that was made and seconded? Okay.
I didn't have it seconded.
No.
Uh, Andrew Sullivan proposed a motion to approve the policy KG, community use of school facilities, except for the fee structure for Carver youth recreation and nonprofit groups.
I'll second it, uh, with, for discussion purposes.
Yep, sure. So what's on your mind, Andy?
No, I just think it's important before we vote to go through all these before we.
Yep. These are, these are the ones that we looked at last time.
Yeah. So I, I mean, I, I will do, we can go through the entire policy again. And Brad, I don't know if you want to do a summary of it because you put the group together. Uh, my, my sense was we have done, we've done that a couple of times, but if we want to look, if we want to look again bullet by bullet, we can do that.
Just liability.
Yeah, nothing major, no major changes in the actual.
The major change is really in the fee structure.
Okay, so we already seen, okay.
We're only voting on the last part anyway, the other.
I thought we were.
I know, I think we're moving to adopt the entire policy except for.
With the reduction of.
The in-town.
The in-town fees. So all the, all the language of the policy plus the other fees is what I understand Andrew's proposal to be, a motion to be, and what Andy seconded.
This will allow us to bring in the opportu, allow us the opportunity to bring in a, uh, funds from outside the district and it'll allow the community through, which we'll talk about. But the community will have, uh, use of the, of the facility. Um, but, and then in 2019, we'll be able to see what revenue we're bringing in. Hopefully it's contractual, so we'll be able to plan ahead. And then we can put together a user fee, um, which is what the group majority had seemed to be in favor of.
And, and the only other point I'd make to that is that, so this other is, does include for-profit rental of the building and those fees have increased. Uh, so for example, the dance studios, the dance studios are Carver dance studios, but they're for-profit businesses who use our facility. We are increasing those fees as well. Um, so adopting that other is not only just the turf field. It's all of those, uh, pieces. And so anybody who runs a business for profit, who went to use the school facilities would incur these new fees.
I'm comfortable with the wording of it, it's stayed the same. I think it's wise to keep the, your, your motion was wise to keep the in-town out until we get more discussion. I wanted to see more actually input from the groups, um, like the impact study we, um, had from youth basketball last month. Like see all, all the groups, how this, these fees or any fees would impact the students and families and, uh, how much is going to cost each family to send, send a student, uh, send a, their child to play one of these sports? You know, I think that's important for us to see before we do anything, you know, with regarding in-town.
Brad, at number six, it says a police officer may be required to be present at the public gathering on school property arrangements. So this protection should be made in advance by the renter directly with the Carver Police Department. What is the status that determines whether a police officer is required or not?
Usually we get the request and it's how many people will be on site. If they're saying there's going to be 500 for, I don't know, the auditorium, whatever that may be, we may look at that to say, okay, we're going to require a police officer.
So it's case by case.
Yeah, so that's reviewed by the administrator who make a determination of based on this event happening in the school, I feel like there should be a police officer.
Okay.
No.
And that's our current practice.
We had spoken about a custodian or someone being that opened the building, closed the building.
It says, it, there's a, there's a phrase in there, uh, it says all groups using the building must be certain that all exterior doors in the area being used or closed and should check with a custodian and security before leaving the premises.
See, I thought we, we weren't going to leave it up to individual groups any longer to close the building.
Right. So what we're, what you're approving right now for other groups would, that fee encompasses a fee for them to have a custodian or a security guard on site. That's been part of the discussion with our town groups.
For interior only though, I want to.
For interior, for interior only.
Yep. Uh, exterior though, we will run for the turf field for this price, the 150, we will have a security person on staff.
For the out of, for the out of town.
Until.
Until we decide what we're going to do with the town, local groups.
So for example, the, um, let's say softball rents the, or an outside softball team rents a field. We're not going to have a security guard, uh, on site, um, for that event, but for the turf field itself, that'll, for the 150 we're charging, that'll include a security person there. And that'll come right out of the money that we get that goes in that revolving account for the replacement.
What about, um, we're not instituting any fee or if, if we do it all until the spring? How is that going to affect the in-town groups with the requirement for a custodian or a police detail?
That's what we need to discuss further because we don't have that in our operational budget to cover that right now.
That's why I brought it up.
Yep. So that's why, that's what I'm, I'm looking for. I mean, I, I don't, I don't really know where we want to go with that. Do we want to say that, um, that's a maintained requirement and it kind of goes along with the custodial fee that we have right now? That if a group out, if an outside group, even youth uses our basketball gym for eight hours on a Saturday, there's a three hour detail fee for cleanup. Do we want to say that the $15 an hour, whatever that number is for security, is billed back to the youth group being charged? I would say absolutely. Um, but again, it's not in written policy. It's up to really our discretion.
What was the?
So right now, Dave was making that determination. So as someone was going to use the facility, he would make a determination of yes, this, this needs facility cleanup and they're going to be charged custodial. He would say, no, this doesn't, it wouldn't charge custodial. People, in terms of the security guard piece, most weekend use was having a security guard that was supposed to be opening and closing the doors for them.
And they were already paying for that.
They were already paying for that.
They were paying just that.
They were just paying the security fee.
Yep, and the cleanup if needed.
If, if Dave determined cleanup was needed. And part of our goal was to tighten up the use of facility and part of that, that's why part of this fee piece was to have custodians involved in if you're going to use our facility on the weekend, you have a custodian on site. But that helps across, that, that helps increase the fee. So that if we're going to reback, if we're going to take a different fee structure, we have to consider that. We're going to require a custodian to be on site at all times.
I don't, I don't know how you want to go ahead with that then with this motion, you know, with, we're going to have to have something in, in wording for the, to solve that.
Well, we're going to solve that when we fall, solve the fee structure of this because it's, it's how it's built in.
Right, but right now we have no wording until the spring.
Well, we're not adopting a policy for the, we're saying we're going to come back to this fee schedule. We're just adopting this fee schedule.
We don't have to figure out language for it right now, Andy. They just have to figure out how to pay for it.
The town administrator has his hand up here.
Or, or what they're going to do within that time until a policy is established.
Right. So keep it as, as existing.
Exactly. Yeah, exactly. We don't have to change it.
So right, we're in essence, we're saying the, for, for town, for town and youth groups, what this, what this motion would do is keep things exactly as they are for right now.
Right.
With the, with the acknowledgement that it's going to change.
I was looking at all the other wording.
We just want to be clear on that. We don't want to have them say, well, they've decided not to change that. So there's acknowledgement that it's going to change, uh, but we want to have discussions and we're willing to have discussions about that. But as of right now, for our youth recreational and Carver nonprofit groups, we're going to, things will stay as they currently are.
Yep.
I don't know if that provides clarity.
Mr. Malinowski, add something?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Um, what's in front of you right now is a very difficult decision as you establish fees for this program. And, and I think, uh, putting things in context, the town has made significant efforts to try to improve the recreation activities in the town. And whether that's the sports complex at the elementary school, whether it's this project we're talking about here. And, and part of that is that I think everybody wanted to give kids in, in the community more activities. If the kids are busy with sports, hopefully they have less opportunity to get into more mischief. And that's part of the process behind here. There's also with a lot of the traveling teams and, and everybody's got a superstar is these expectations that we're going to keep fields groomed like Fenway. And I, I think as we've known in the past, the town hasn't been able to afford that level of maintenance compared to what the expectation is. But now we've built fields with a high level of expectation and we still don't have any more operational money than we had before. So as difficult as this is because it's going to add some cost to different programs, there needs to be this revenue source coming in to maintain this exquisite properties to the level that everybody expects. And, and certainly what you're doing tonight, I think is commendable is to at least get the out of towners and the for-profits because those are going to help subsidize the town pieces. And, and yes, the town fees are going to have to go up. Andy, there's going to have to be security, there's going to have to be protection. It has to be done and has to be paid for somehow. How it gets paid for, again, is a tough job that you've got to do. And hopefully that there'll be programs where there can be scholarships, you know, for, for individuals that have challenges in, in paying for those needs. And that's why I say this is a really tough decision that you guys have to do. I think you're taking it correctly right now, getting the, the policies, getting the out of town, the, the for-profit taken care of. But the next discussion you're going to have to do is, is not going to be a win-win for everybody. It's really what's in the best long-term interest to maintain that level of expectation that everybody has. And, and, you know, we'll look at other ways of, of funding this, but we also have other funding needs in, in the town for personnel and, and other AP classes and, you know, we still got a police station that we have to build. You know, so there's a lot of competing interests that are out there and I think the assets have been, been given by the taxpayers. The taxpayers aren't interested in subsidizing out of town or for-profit companies, but they want to help the locals, but you got to figure out how to make that all work. So again, I'm just saying it's a tough thing, Andy. You're not going to make everybody happy.
I, I usually don't.
Yeah. And, and this one, I can guarantee that not everyone's going to be happy with this, but it's, it's taking that long-term view to, to make sure you have the revenue to come in to, to maintain the expectation of what the fields are.
I just wanted to be clear before we, you know, rushed in with anything, you know, with wording and, you know, it's better to go slow, I think, than fast.
No rush, man. Hurry up. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Scott.
No, I'm good. I think we covered everything.
Again, just to state that the money that's, specific money for turf field use is going to go in its own separate revolving account, which only expenses for the field turf that come up for security, that's all that's drawn off of it. So when replacement time comes, that's a down payment that we have towards that replacement.
So Brad, um, we'll be really interested in hearing your solutions at our next meeting.
We'll knock everything down five bucks and we'll go forward with a five.
Um, but, but I think as far as we're concerned right now, does anyone have any questions with the language or with the structure that relates to out of town?
I guess maybe I did create a possible question. I didn't think about this. Um, nonprofit groups that are out of town.
They fall under other.
They do?
Yeah.
Okay. Just want to make sure this is the last, other than that, I don't need to change anything.
Yep.
See no other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous?
So now it goes into a discussion about access. And we just wanted to hear the committee's opinion on that. I mean, ultimately, we, we kind of laid out the opinion, we saw, our original opinion was this, our original proposal, I guess, made by me, was that this was a CPC funded field, it's a community field and the community should be able to access the field. And it's that total concept of balancing access versus security. Uh, and, and I think we're talking about, uh, the reality of, you know, sometimes an individual community member likes to walk the track or sometimes, and, but the problem is once you have access to the track, you have access to everything. So the way I had the setup and design is if you can access the track, you can access it all. Um, and that doesn't mean, obviously that didn't necessarily mean we were going to leave it unlocked 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Uh, but we only, we're looking for guidance from the committee of what, what's going to be, what's going to be our communication to people about, um, when they can access the track.
I haven't seen the security camera footage. How, in your opinion, how is it?
I haven't seen the security footage either.
Okay.
So it's not fully installed?
It's not even up yet. I don't think, it's not up and running yet.
I did get an email from Activitas and it actually shows, it's pretty in-depth of if you narrow it and focus it in, if you set it up that way, you can actually get a pretty solid picture of whoever's entering and exiting.
And we're looking at redesigning the gate entry.
Yep.
Uh, so that a vehicle, I mean, I mean, any, any vehicle could go through the fence. Uh, but that they were, we are redesigning the gate entry so that, to try to preclude vehicles from being able to enter the facility if it was unlocked.
Vehicles, dirt bikes.
Right.
Now, we, we talked a little bit too, um, where there, there are custodians during the week there, uh, pretty much 24/7, right?
Yep. So it's, there's not a custodial shift from, uh, you know, from Friday at second shift then, so 11, from 11 o'clock Friday night until Monday morning. So that's the time there's no custodians. So that's the time there's no custodians onsite. Then we'd have to pay someone for overtime. I mean, during the week, it could be part of the custodian's regular deal to go out and lock everything up at, at dusk, at nine o'clock.
Yeah.
You know, whatever dusk is, this dusk now is, or if, so if someone's not using it, once it gets dark, it's locked up. Uh, that can just be part of the regular process. I think it would be more, summer and weekends would really be our issues of, of access. And then obviously, just from a general school security standpoint, would be access during the school day. I think the school's position would be, uh, just the reality of today's, nature of today's security concerns is that's, people would not be able to access the field during the school day.
I think that should be.
Which I think people would be, feel comfortable with. I think the town administration has a thought on this too.
Sorry, um, both these projects, the elementary school and this track and field were both funded by CPC funds. And I think, as Scott mentioned in the beginning, is that the intent of the CPC and the purpose of those funds is that it's available for town people to use. Now, clearly, I think we, it was made very clear from the school district that, you know, during the, the academic year, during the school hours of operation, the playgrounds behind the elementary school, no one can use those because it's there for the school use. The same thing, you don't want people walking around. Same thing applies for the middle high school. But once the school day is over, if someone wants to walk the track or go play basketball across the hoop or go throw a football around at these fields or those fields with their son or daughter, they technically would have the right to do that, subject to some event being programmed where you rent it the field out.
Used, exactly.
Right. Now, if you rent it the field out, well, then they can't throw a football to their kid on the field.
Right.
Um, so, I, I only just bringing that up to kinda short circuit the conversation is just because, you know, clearly no school activities, but beyond that, you know, we're gonna have the security cameras and if any damage happens, we're gonna prosecute to the fullest extent. Um, but this is taxpayer money and the intent was with the CPC, because they had this discussion, is to make sure it's open. And I think the, the superintendent did a great job when they were doing the naming of the, the field too, is that it's the Carver Field, you know, it's not just the school field, it's the Carver Field. It's the town of Carver Field.
We talked about that last time, that there's no crusader anywhere on that field. There's no crusaders anywhere.
I mean, uh, the same statement I made earlier about the town and the schools, there's no separation, that still applies. It's not like it applies to one thing and not to another. It's, the taxpayers paid for this. It's all, yes, it, it's for the school use when school is going on, but it is a town project. I think that's pretty clear throughout. I don't think that's necessarily a concern. The concern is really the fact that it is under the management of the schools and therefore liable to the schools when things do go wrong that way. So coming up with the right plan to make sure that that's maintained in the best possible way is something that we're tasked with. Um, it, I'd like the dusk to dawn kind of idea where it's closed when it gets too dark and it's not open. It doesn't need to be open twenty-four seven.
What about weekends though? Weekends are, are kinda the issue.
With no one there.
No one there, yeah. No one's scheduled to be there.
I would say it opens when an event's there. So by that, I mean if on Saturday Carver Youth Soccer is using the field and it gets opened at eight o'clock, nine o'clock in the morning.
For that group.
For that group, and somebody wants, and people wanna come run the track, they can come run the track. Um, and that same thing on Sunday. So if youth football is using the, the complex, then they can come in on Saturdays and Sundays and, and use it. If no one is renting the complex, then the complex is locked.
I, I disagree with that. I think it needs to be open on the weekends because that's the time people are gonna wanna use it. It, there's no way, there's nobody that we could have that could come in to like open it and close it?
Yeah, I mean.
Hasn't got a cost.
Yeah, well, everything's gonna be a cost, man, but, but, you know, that's a minor cost, I think, compared to the bigger picture of what we're trying to do. You know, you're talking about, well, I'm not talking about having somebody there all day. Clearly, we can't afford that. Um, and, and with the cameras, I don't think we need it, but we can't say, hey, you know.
And I do think, I, I do feel like there's a benefit to not having it open at night.
I feel there's a great benefit to not just leaving it open. That's what I'm saying, man. You're, you're kind of inviting, I think, something if you're doing that. Um, and it just seems to me to make sense that it would be worth the cost of having somebody, if possible, come out to unlock and come back to lock. I don't know how inconvenient that would be or what the cost would be, but on the weekends, it just seems to make sense to me that that would be the best way to do it.
We can investigate.
Because it should be open.
We can investigate ways to do that. And I'm not saying it has to be a custodian. I'm not saying it has to be, that's definitely a pretty, uh, that's something we could do probably pretty easily.
I, I'd rather take an approach that's, that's trusting and, and thinking that things are gonna happen the right way as opposed to just automatically assuming the worst and then trying to deal with it then. So I like the approach of, of trying to make it as inviting as we presented it when we asked for it. And, and to try and keep it that way as much as possible.
Yeah, we can, uh, we can look at options.
I mean, can we wait until the security camera lease is operable?
I, I would, I would agree with that.
Yeah, I mean, and, and really what we're looking at is, is six, seven weeks.
Right.
I mean, Thanksgiving after Thanksgiving, you know, it's, it's really not gonna be a, a used thing. So we're trying to go six or seven weeks.
You, you say that, but that's not really true.
November and December are supposed to be really warm months, man. You're gonna, there are gonna be warm months.
I don't, I, I don't think.
That'll be used in December, January, as long as there's no snow.
There's no snow on it, I think people will walk the track. I think they will.
Well, well, no, 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 no. If, so if people rent it out, it's open. So if a, if a club comes in and says they wanna rent it out in December, when we have no other sports, it's an open facility at that point, so anyone could come in and use it.
But we're saying it's an open facility all the time.
If it's not rented on the weekend.
So I guess that's the question is on the weekends, dusk to dawn is what I think I've heard.
Right.
And then we can coordinate with the police department or with Dave Seigantoff. We'll, we'll find a way to open and close the gate.
It's gotta be a short, it's gotta be pretty short money to, even if it is money to open and close.
Because at the end of the day, people can still hop the fence. I mean, it's not that it's, it's.
Yeah, I mean, all they're so wants to get in, they hop the fence.
Hey, couldn't officers roll through and open the gate and close?
Well, we'll, we'll take a look at the details there.
I, I would, I would rather be a little reactionary here and deal with it if something goes wrong than, than not allow people usage.
I agree.
Great problems that we don't need to.
And I think, I mean, yeah, I agree.
Can I just ask one question for clarification? The lights for the field, obviously there's electric draw on that. Is the policy, and I haven't read it, is that those only go on when it's a paid event?
They have to pay extras.
Or it's a school-sponsored event, so we don't have anybody that can flick the lights on?
Correct, so, so in terms of, right, there is a fee with using the lights and we're not gonna say that as, in my opinion, I don't necessarily, I don't think the public, when we said those would be public access to the field, I don't think the public was thinking they'd be able to come down on, uh, Friday and hit the lights and, uh, play with their son on the football field.
Just clarified so we all.
Cause I, I like the dusk idea just in general for a lot of reasons.
Okay.
You closing it?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we can, that's why I thought.
You can do dusk to dawn throughout the year.
That's why I asked about the police officer on the weekend, if someone could roll through, open it, and then roll through at night.
We'll work through a system to have that happen.
If the town could, yeah, approve that or find some way to do it.
I, I really, I know what you're saying, man. I, I really do, but I think.
It's all, it's all balancing.
Gordy, fine.
It's all, and it's all balancing security. We wanna maintain the fields. I mean, I get it, everybody wants us to be something that five years from now, we look at it, it looks as good then as it does today.
But I agree with James. I mean, it was, it was, it was put out as a community project, you know.
Well, it is a community project.
Yeah, that's what I mean, so it's not just.
And it was funded by the community and it needs to be appreciated by the community.
Alright, so we will, uh, we'll work with the town to set up a, set up a system to have it.
We update this next time on.
Yeah, access, access in the field, so people, so community access for the field.
New funding idea.
And how did we leave it so the Saturdays and Sundays, that, that organizations from our community are using the field? The security person, that's coming from where?
That'll come.
That money?
That, that will, will maintain our current policy in place right now that we will charge them back for that.
Right.
That's part of, because basketball does that.
Okay, that, so it's the same, okay, that's fine.
Yeah, cause I guess that would be the biggest issue is making sure that if the field isn't used by somebody renting it, that it's not open to the general public.
We'll just have to get that out to those groups because in the past, they wouldn't have known that. I mean, you know, soccer didn't have an indoor policy to know that they, but I, but, but that makes sense to me. That makes sense.
And, and we've already actually scheduled the field out, I think, for the next three or four weeks. Uh, so we've, Mike Schultz has a spreadsheet of who's gonna be using the field, when they're gonna be using it. And we knew that we weren't gonna have, we had a sense we weren't gonna have a policy in place for that tonight, so those people have, and we've been clear that we're not gonna have expectation that they're gonna pay until a new policy is adopted, so it'll just be that charge back.
But security would only be on the weekends.
Yeah, weekends.
Monday to Friday, we have someone on staff.
Right.
And how long until the camera system is up?
That I don't know. I can follow up.
Camera's gonna be delivered this week, so it should be.
I can follow up with that on Thursday. We have a, we have a weekly meeting. I'll follow up on Thursday when the camera will be installed.
So that's something new for custodial too then, i- as far as the lockup and unlock and all that. So that's something to make sure they're clear on.
Yep.
That, that's clear.
And this will eliminate multiple people having keys to the, the building, the cog, cog keys?
Well, yes, we're gonna eliminate that.
You already done? Okay, good, alright.
And I don't think there's any other, no, we weren't voting on that.
Policy, yep, so.
We're just setting parameters, having a public discussion about what the parameters would be.
Moving on to budget transfers and policy.
Brad? Mayor's gonna open that up. So no major changes actually from, um, large-scale items. What I did wanna do is I do wanna highlight a few quick things, but before we get there, let me scroll down to the line number.
Eight hundred and seventy-three.
Right down there, mine's a little bit slower. Can you scroll down to one sixty-six, Mayor? There. What we did on one sixty-six was, that was for the salary drivers for special ed, um, in-house. What we were able to do is we were able to take the savings from, um, from the vocational and run that. Um, we're actually adding that money on to that expense because we save from the vocational driver because we contracted that out with Plymouth and Middleborough as well. Um, and we're, we were able to take that driver who normally ran the vocational routes, put them into a special ed route, so we were able to in-house and out of district, um, costs that we had. So it was actually a pretty significant savings that we had there. But I'll go more in depth on that in the next slide. And that was really, really small money for interdepartmental changes. The one I wanna look at is the highlights tab. So if you look, I, I lumped them together. Um, the first three are all contracted services, um, and the homeless transportation account, all transportation. This reflects, um, a pretty bad scenario where we are right now for this early in the school year. Um, you can see we've already encumbered our entire amount and we're actually short eleven thousand in our contracted services account. Um, the Volk Aggie schools, um, we were twelve thousand short. That represents the money though from the other contracted service. So technically that line, you actually have a savings from general year-to-year expenditures, which is good. But from the amount that was originally budgeted, that actually is a shortfall listed. And the homeless transportation, we've already encumbered sixteen two hundred. Um, again, only being in October for a whole school year, that's not a lot of money, thirty-six hundred bucks for the rest of the school year. Um, so just wanna make a note of that. The expenses for our utility lines, um, natural gas in both the elementary and middle high school, um, haven't been enough data to really dive into that yet, but I do wanna highlight the electricity. Yeah, we have the energy thing. The electricity at the elementary school, um, has been out of control.
This is the, this is the climate control?
This is the new cost. Um, part of the climate control was the fans originally were installed, were running on an hourly basis. So they were running twenty-four times a day. Dave Seigantoff has now scaled that back. I won't see the impact of that till the next bill, but I imagine it's gonna drop that off dramatically. Another issue we had was CTA, when they originally, um, were, had the owning, where they owned the building, they were paying this bill direct. And when we rolled it over from CTA to Carver, we kept the same account number. But what happened was we're a municipality, so we qualify for a different rate sheet. The rate sheet was not put into effect and still not, but they will backdate that to July one or the date that we exactly took over.
So it's a little bit of an elevated cost right now.
Correct. We fronted the cost. We'll get a cost back. But again, generally thinking, I mean, even if we recoup ten percent, we're still in a bad state. What's that?
It's all gonna go to heat?
What's?
It's all gonna go to heat?
Exactly. Uh, most of our funds are gonna go to, uh, heat if, um, any savings we have in electricity. But the elementary electricity though, I do wanna say that I, I'm projecting that right now to be well over expended, the original one eighty-five that we had budgeted. Um, I hope we do save on heat if we have a mild winter. Um, the town did set up a utility account to help offset any expenses that we had for utilities like this. Um, so we'll be able to utilize that. But I just want it to be known, I mean, the first month we had bill, first full month we had, um, of an in-use was thirty-one thousand for the elementary by itself. Um, again, that's at a higher rate.
Right.
For the rate sheet, but they'll correct that. It'll go back down. Um, but we're still trending at expending much more electricity.
And that was also in a heavy cooling season, but.
Yeah, this was a.
But it's still gonna be, it's gonna be, it's gonna be over what we're.
Over budget.
Over budget. It's, it's gonna impact our budget next year.
We will have one-time money to utilize, to utilize for that offset, um, so it won't impact our actual operational budget. The special ed tuitions, um, if you follow along, the last cluster of three, secondary sped tuition non-public, um, we were four hundred twenty-six thousand dollars in the negative, um, on that account line. The sped tuition collaboratives, you'll see for the elementary level, we were two hundred twelve to the positive. And for sped tuitions and collaboratives at the high school level, we were three forty-one. Overall, we had a shortfall on our books of five hundred fifty-five thousand. Take off the offset that we had budgeted of four seventy-six. Currently, we're eighty thousand dollars short projected for special ed tuitions. Um, that number has gone up another thirty thousand dollars since I adjusted this and uploaded this on. Um, but again, that's where we are and the town again has revenue set aside for the special ed tuitions, um, that we could utilize. There is qualifying expenses that would fit under this. So I don't wanna hit the panic button yet, um, but again, we're just starting October and we are already a hundred thousand dollars short on that account line. Between them together. And the key factor in this of, we've had a couple of kids move placements who were grouped together. And what happens is when you group them together, you can save on transportation because you could put two or three together on one bus. That's why the number for sped transportation went up so high is because we've had them split and we have a lot of singletons now that we can't consolidate on one van. So we've gotta take separate vans that cost flat amount by themselves.
We've had a couple, uh, unanticipated out placements.
Yep.
Two specifically.
Any other focuses for you, Brad?
No, that was it.
I take a motion there.
I vote to approve the transfers.
Second. Motion made in second. Any, any questions on any of these?
I'll keep you guys in line with the whole electricity and where that's going.
Please do, man, for sure, especially once that compensation comes in, yeah.
Yep. But I was, kinda wanted to cry when I saw the first thirty-one thousand.
Yeah, but twenty-four hours, it was on twenty-four hours a day.
Cycling an hour, every hour, every event, recycling. So we've now changed it up.
We backed that off.
Yeah, we backed that off. It was pretty cold in that building too.
Yeah.
For a while.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
And we just have two out-of-state field trips, uh, both in December. New York City traditional eighth grade trip that kinda happens every year, and Trinity Rep, which is also to see, a Christmas cattle, which has been a kind of attritional one. The seventh grader's gone on. So both these trips have happened in these grade levels for the last five, six years, eighth grade longer than that.
I'll make a motion to approve the field trips for grade eight to New York City and grade seven to the Trinity Rep.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any questions?
Nope.
I have an eighth grader, so I'd be in trouble if I said no. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
You're going to New York, right?
Not I, no. Never. Uh, reports from the school committee.
Well, I could say that, that the event for, uh, Mr. Ward, um, last Friday night, I thought really, really, uh, went great. I really was like, uh, legitimately really proud to have been able to attend and, and see this. And this is somebody I really looked up to and that's what I said to him and, um, but, but it was just crazy to see how many other people thought the exact same thing as I did. That, you know, at the end of the day, it's just, even if you didn't know him, you saw him and said, that's, that's the guy that I like. Just you see what he does and you see the type of person he is and he's just such a, such a good person, so. Um, I, and I, and I also wanna just commend you guys with the job you did. I thought, you know, showing up and it was set up well and, uh, seemed pretty buttoned up and the speeches were great. So really, you know, kudos to you and Ruby with, uh, putting that together.
Thank you.
And, uh, and that's probably, uh, that's my highlight, I guess, for last week.
I'll just echo what Andrew just said, congratulate Mr. Ward. I think he was very deserving of it. I've, I'm proud to be able to call him my friend. I've become friends with him in the last several years, you know, uh, and, uh, he's a, he's a genuinely good person, you know, that really cares about people and that was evident as we all saw. And, uh, and also, um, from our last meeting, I wanna thank everybody from the, from the community that came out to, um, support the food pantry at our Fill It Up Carver event, uh, last month. Thank you again. We appreciate it. That's it.
In my seven years here, it's kind of a little disappointing that it's contentious issues that tend to fill up our room and we're usually empty beyond that, but, uh, But, uh, I think the things that have happened over the past couple of months